They will choose private or charter schools, depriving the district from increased revenues. And who can blame them? How can they or any one of us trust that this won't be the beginning of escalating class sizes whenever there is a budget shortfall? Just as this board has said that there will be no teacher layoffs, a stand I personally applaud, we need to hear a strong directive from this board that increased class sizes are not an option now and will not be in the future. We know the choices presented to you range from bad to worse, but this one should not even be debatable. We all know that unless a strong foundation is established early on, a child's chances for academic success drop dramatically. Do not lay our children's educational future on a foundation of quicksand. Please stand firm in your resolve and create a covenant with San Diego families that class sizes are non-negotiable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sarah Scalo and I stand behind Sandy, everything that she said, so I won't create another speech because I think she said it for all of the parents in San Diego City Schools.
Okay, thank you. The next speaker, Percy Tolliver, is on Franklin Elementary School.
Thank you for having me speak and haven't seen you in 10 years since the U.S.
I know.
But anyway, I'm a parent of two students that go to Franklin and one is special need. And something happened last week where my daughter got suspended, the one who has ADHD, and also kicked off the bus for so many days, which is her fault. But having a principal on campus is so important and the reason being, just so happened, this happened on a Thursday, that Friday morning, the principal was there. And to make a long story short, I fought in Vietnam in '68, '69 on Hill 937 Hamburgi Hill. I got shot twice, I've been blown up once. Not only during my whole tour, I didn't realize what had happened to me. Right now, I'm taking treatment twice a week for something that was sprayed on me. If the principal, not being on campus, wasn't able to make arrangements with the bus company, also with her suspension, I would miss my chemo treatment. It's very important. We need leadership on every elementary school at all times. You have to have a leader. If you don't have a leader, things that you least expect are going to happen. Our principal, Jean Small, God bless her soul, I was able to make one of my treatments this week, I'll be able to make the other one this week, and next week, I'll be able to make the next two, all because she was present on campus. I'd like to thank the board to think about this here. When you remove a principal, if there's an emergency and there's no principal on campus, everyone's gonna suffer. So please, try to reinstate our principals permanently. I don't know how you're gonna do it, but do it. Thank you.
Thank you. The next group of people that are... Thank you. The next few people that are speaking are O'Morris, JROTC, Harold Williams, Michael Higgin, Darrell Chandler, Lito McQuaid, Liza Yabro, Anna Adrea, Jessie Sebastian, please come forward as I call your name, James Mavak, Dresel Hiloril, I think that's right, Novell Mendel, William Pennick, and Vernice Apez. Because you have a number of speakers, I think you have about like eight or nine speakers, we're just gonna give you 15 minutes total. Okay. Okay. All right.
Madam President Jackson, Superintendent Greer, distinguished board members, my name is Sergeant Major Harold Lee Williams and my home address is on record. Currently, I'm the senior army instructor at Morris High School. I've been teaching military science at Morris High School since 1998. Our cadet program is the largest in the San Diego Unified School District. At the present time, we have a total of 246 cadets enrolled in our program. I would like to share some history about JROTC from its inception. JROTC came into being with the passage of the National Defense Act of 1916. In 1964, the legalization act opened up JROTC to other services and replaced most of the active duty instructors with the TIEs, who worked for and was shared with others, called sharing with other schools. Title 10 of the U.S. Code declares that the purpose of JROTC is to instill in students in the United States Secondary Education Institution the value of citizenship, service to the United States, personal responsibility, and sense of accomplishment. Although the program retains its military structure and the result ability to infuse in its student cadets a sense of discipline and order, it's shed most of its early military content to study up ethics, citizenship, communications, leadership, life skills, and other subjects designed to prepare young men and young women to take their place in our adult society. And what I have for each of you is a book, one of the many books that we use, The Foundations of Success. No cost to the group. And the part is this.
Thank you.
Other enables we use in the classroom to reinforce cognitive learning is the Classroom Performance System. It is a computer-generated system that allows each student to answer questions in the classroom without them being identified on who gave the right or wrong answer. We also have CDs and DVDs to reinforce the learning that we take from the textbooks. No cost to the district. We have a total of 1,645 programs in the country, including the ones overseas. There's a total of 281,000 cadets in the JROTC program, with 4,500 of those instructors. Every year, we do a intentional graduates report and it's a composite of questions that we ask the seniors, and I have a list, Superintendent Greer, since I know you like statistics, from 2005 to 2008. What were they going? How many was gonna go to a four-year institution? How many was gonna go to a junior college? How many of them was gonna decide later? How many of them was going to do something else? From our program, 89 seniors, 37% of those enrolled into a four-year college, 43% enrolled into a junior college, 13% enlisted in the military, which has a percentage of 4%, four cadets out of 89. And the rest, 1%, was undecided. Our cadets maintain a GPA of 3.0 in leadership position, ought to be in one of the positions. Here's the bottom line. Our cadets are local kids from every ethnicity, from every walk of life, from every background, and across sections of the community. Here in a few minutes, you're gonna listen to the students speak about the program and what it means to them and the school and the community, the ball is in your court. And I hope, based on everything that you hear, that you reconsider taking JROTC off the elimination list. Thank you for your time.
My name is Lito Mique. My address is 868 Plaza Torreón, San Diego, California 92114. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm a parent of Morris High School students, bested parent. I have one that just graduated last year, who's part of JROTC and going to SDSU right now, taking films. And I have a senior also at Morris High School, who's part of the drum corps, and I have a freshman who's part of drill team. Myself, I'm retired military, 20 years and 14 days active duty, United States Navy. I'm a president of PTSA at Morris High School and also student side council board member. I've been a military person all my life and still is because we're retired, we're already in for life. I learned one thing about military, military courtesy and discipline, which is I implement on my children. It speaks about discipline because I teach my children to be part of this community. It's very... Military is giving a lot of impact because we know how to take care of our own. We're war tested because we've been to wars. Vietnam people has won national defense, we earned twice. Also, I teach my children because I'm the one who made my children join the ROTC because it's gonna benefit them more, not that I can't discipline them, but you know, on the professional side of discipline, they would get that from the JROTC and hopefully get it on college and also in JROTC. I just wanna make emphasis that we can't remove this out of our school system. You know, it removes it, it's gonna eliminate a lot of stuff, like my country in the Philippines, ROTCs has been removed from school system and it made a lot of impact, you know, in discipline and courtesy wise. Thank you.
My name is Liza. I'm currently a Morris High School student. My home address is on the record. I'm here on behalf of Morris JROTC to show how successful my senior capstone project was and to convince you that JROTC is a program that teaches discipline to young adults and helps students who want to pursue a career in the military and become successful later in life. Every senior at Morris High School has to complete what we call a capstone project. For my capstone project, I chose to create troop care packages. I chose to do troop care packages because I have several family members in the military and I wanted to do something to give back to the soldiers who put their lives on the line for us every single day. I didn't know that something so little can make such a huge impact on just one person. What I did was organize a school-wide donation drive to donate different items such as toothbrushes, toothpaste, snacks, stationery, soap, shampoo. With these donations, I put together over 25 packages and I shipped them overseas to soldiers who are deployed and fighting for our freedom in Iraq. In each package, I handwrote letters explaining who I am and why I sent these packages to them. At the end of each letter, I asked them if they could kindly take the time out of their day to write back to me. To my surprise, the first letter I received was from a Morris alumni who graduated in 1991. If you haven't already read those letters that he passed out, Major Brian Marzon mentioned that his fondest memory of Morris was being a part of the JROTC program throughout his high school career. The support and the competitiveness of the JROTC program has made a positive impact on Brian Marzon's life and has helped him rank as major in the military. With that being said, I strongly believe that you shouldn't consider eliminating such a significant program such as JROTC. Thank you.
Madam President, Mr. Greer, my name is William Pennick. I reside at 111 on Wedgewood Drive, San Diego, California 92114. And I was under the impression this was just going to be concerning junior ROTC, but having read your documentation, what I'm understanding with these cuts is a throwback to the blueprint for student failure. What you're cutting not only would be junior ROTC, community and cultural programs, reduce custodial ground staff, eliminate the junior ROTC, visual and performing arts and high school athletic sports program, reduce staffing for counseling at elementary schools, reduce nurse and vice principal staff, eliminate health technicians, and cut school supplies by 25%. Now, I've had my daughter, my oldest daughter graduate from junior ROTC at the top 5% of her class. My youngest son graduated last year and he had a 3.0 on better GPA. They've become protective members of society. That's what junior ROTC is. I'm ex-military myself. They provide the discipline to young children. You don't know how many times that in my 33 years in the military, teenagers straight from high school came into military, they could read, but they could not comprehend what they reading, what they was reading. They hadn't any discipline, they didn't know how to work. We have programs to educate them. If you eliminate a program that teaches this discipline, junior ROTC, the arts, the culture programs, you are booming again under the blueprint for student failure, which doomed our children, to doom them again to failure. We need junior ROTC in our classrooms, we need the arts in our classrooms, we need the principals and the counselors in our classrooms at all the schools, not just Morris. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam President Jackson, Superintendent Greer, and distinguished board members. My name is Cadet Corporal Chandler and I'm a ninth grader at Morris High School. The Morris High School program is a very vital... The JROTC program is a very vital part of Morris High School. It has been around since 1967. There's a lot of things that have been taught in JROTC. The students in JROTC are taught the seven Army values, L, D, R, S, H, I, P. L is for loyalty, the faithfulness to your country and companions. D is for duty, fulfilling your obligations. R is for respect, treating others as they should be. S is for selfless service, providing for others before yourself. H is for honor, having good beliefs and morals. I is for integrity, doing the right thing at all time. And P is for personal courage, recognizing fear and danger and thus conquering it. If all people had these qualities, wouldn't we live in a better world? And JROTC, people are able to join many different teams. Me, myself, I'm in drum corps. Drum corps in JROTC has made me feel like I am part of a bigger whole, like I feel like I'm a part of something. JROTC has changed my life and has changed the lives of many others. Please do not take away this program. Madam President Jackson, Superintendent Greer, and distinguished board members, I would like to recite the JROTC creed. I am an Army junior ROTC cadet. I will conduct myself to bring credit to my family, country, school, and corporate cadets. I am loyal and patriotic. I am the future of the United States of America. I do not lie, cheat, and steal, and will be always accountable for my actions and deed. I will practice good citizenship and patriotism. I will work hard to improve my mind and strengthen my body. I will seek the mantle of leadership and stand prepared to uphold the Constitution. May God grant me the strength to live by this creed. Thank you for your time, Madam President Jackson, Superintendent Greer, and distinguished board members.
Good evening, Madam President Jackson, Superintendent Greer, and members of the board. My name is Anna Jauda. My address is on record and I am currently a student at San Diego State University. I am a Morris alumni from the class of 2008 and I was last year's battalion commander from Morris JROTC. I would like to speak to you about my experiences with JROTC after the past four years of my high school and why I believe JROTC should not be eliminated from the curriculum of our school district. When I was a freshman, I honestly did not know what was gonna happen to me when I was in JROTC.
Finish up your last thought.
Yes, ma'am. I learned leadership skills, which has given me the courage to actually speak in front of you today. And I believe that future cadets who will participate in JROTC will also gain the courage, the leadership skills, the courage to be able to stand in front of audiences, to stand up for themselves and what they believe in, just as I have learned in JROTC. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now have Andre Aragosa and Melissa Solom speaking on Spreakles Magnet, followed by Maria Reyes and Monica Perez on Limbiche Bilingual Guidance Aid at TOLLER, followed by, I think I think those four, and then I'll see how we're doing the time.
Good evening. First, I wanted to thank Dr. Evans for visiting our school last week. Parents were thrilled to have his time and thoughtful feedback on the budget and issues that relate to Spreakles, particularly magnet funding and magnet transportation. We are hopeful that your decision today will be made with pride and confidence that you are impacting thousands and thousands of children in a most positive way by continuing to allow them to thrive in culturally diverse settings where creative and critical learning takes place every day. These characteristics are needed in today's world more than ever and these students are our leaders. We have offered a number of solutions on how to reform magnet transportation and continue to collect other ideas from parents on both that and also other ideas that can be helpful to the district in general. These include, whether they're workable or not, changing the length of the school year, considering whether the Wednesday half-day is an effective and cost-sensible solution, and expanding the six-to-six programs to generate revenue that can assist the district throughout the year with other programs. We want to thank you for your time and we want to work with you now and in the future. It's for the benefit of our kids in San Diego and across the nation. Please revote to restore magnet transportation. Thank you.
Melissa? Melissa?
Hi, my name is Andrea Aragosa. I'm a concerned parent from Spreakles Bilingual Magnet as well as a school counselor. I am here to express my support for magnet programs and the transportation needed to maintain them. Magnets are valuable to the district for many reasons. This is obvious by the number of students that apply to magnets every year. This process has come to a standstill as we wait for your decision about the fate of our schools next year. As time goes by, students find other schools, teachers find other employment, and our schools begin to slowly dismantle. Please find a way to fund magnet programs next year as soon as possible. I would also like to express my concern regarding increasing class sizes. As a parent volunteer in a kindergarten class, I see the challenges that our teachers face. Children have a multitude of levels, capabilities, learning styles, and behavior issues, and yet teachers are expected to teach every child to read by the end of the first year of school. The increase in class size will impact the neediest students the most. I understand that these are challenging times, but please make decisions with our entire community in mind. Please seek out and consider all creative solutions that are suggested. Please make cuts as far away from the classroom as possible and find a way to maintain a quality education for our children.
Thank you. The next two speakers are on bilingual guidance aid, Maria Reyes and Monica Perez.
Mi nombre es María Reyes y soy una madre preocupada de la escuela TOLLER. Soy una madre preocupada por los recortes que está sufriendo el distrito escolar y siento que el puesto de la señora Nelly Goodman afectará a toda la escuela, desde niños, maestros y padres de familia. Porque la señora ayuda bastante desde que se bajan los niños del bus hasta que se suben. He sido una madre voluntaria en la escuela y he visto todo el desempeño que hace la señora en la escuela. No sé qué va a pasar porque de tres traductoras que hay, solo ella siempre está disponible para que la necesite. Es nuestra guía en la escuela y nos mantiene informados de lo que está pasando en la escuela. Y también nos recuerda las juntas para no faltar y ella es una persona excelente para que siga trabajando en la escuela TOLLER porque tiene más de 20 años ahí ella. Y sobre todo, les recuerdo que afectará a niños, maestros y padres. Muchas gracias por escucharnos.
I will do this in first-person singular and it says, "I'm a worried parent because of all of the cuts that the district is undergoing. I feel that Mrs. Nelly Goodman will be leaving, by leaving will affect the school, the students, the teachers, and the parents, because she helps a lot from the moment that the kids go down from the bus to the moment that they leave. I have been a volunteer parent, I have seen everything she does, and if she leaves, I don't know what's gonna happen. We have three translators or maybe guidance assistants and she's the only one available for every need. She's our only guide and keeps us posted. She also tells us when the meetings are going to be held. She's an excellent individual, we need to keep her in school. She has been there for more than 20 years and she knows everything. I remind you that everyone will be affected at school."
Hola, mi nombre es Monica Perez. Y vengo en nombre del grupo de padres de la escuela elemental TOLLER. Nuestra inconformidad por padre, por parte de nosotros...
Their disagreement on behalf of the parents is...
...y nuestros niños...
...and our children...
...es el despido de la señora Nelly Goodman.
Is a layoff of Miss Nelly Goodman.
Ya que ella es una persona muy importante para todos los latinos...
She's a very important person for all of the Latinos...
...quienes no hablamos inglés...
...who do not speak English.
...y quien ya lleva más de 20 años...
...and she has been there for more than 20 years...
...desempeñando su trabajo...
...doing the same job...
...y es injusto...
...and it is unfair...
...que personas que tienen menos de un año trabajando en esa escuela...
...the people that have less than a year working at that school...
...y quienes en realidad no realizan bien su trabajo...
...and in reality do not do their work adequately.
Nuestra preocupación como padres...
...our worried parents...
...es qué es lo que va a pasar el siguiente año...
...what's going to happen next year...
...y ver la cara de nuestros niños tristes...
...and to see the children's sad faces...
...al saber del despido de la señora Nelly...
...when they know that Miss Nelly will be laid off.
Este año ha tenido un cambio radical...
...there has been a radical change this year...
...en todo concepto...
...in all of the concepts at school...
...ya que la señora Nelly Goodman...
...because Mrs. Nelly Goodman...
...fue años atrás...
...years back...
...un buen apoyo...
...was a great support...
...para el ex-director de la escuela...
...for the ex-vice principal of the school...
...Harlan Klein...
...Mr. Harlan Klein.
Les agradezco el haberme escuchado...
...I wanna thank you and appreciate for listening to me...
...muchas gracias y confiamos...
...we wanna thank, I wanna thank you...
...en ustedes en que nos puedan ayudar...
...and we trust that you can help us...
...a resolver esto...
...to resolve this matter...
...y que la señora Nelly se quede con nosotros...
...and as Mrs. Nelly...
...de nuestros niños...
...will remain at school for the good of our children.
Gracias.
We also have Anna Rodriguez on the same subject. Will she come forward now, please? Thank you.
Yo soy la señora Anna Rodriguez y también vengo a apoyar en lo que ya los padres aquí están.
She's stating her name and she comes to support what the two parents before her said.
Si, la señora Nelly Goodman es una persona que todos los niños y padres necesitamos porque ella es la que nos traduce siempre en la escuela...
Miss Nelly Goodman is a person that we all need, the parents of children, because she does the translation at school...
...y ella siempre está disponible para todo lo que nosotros necesitamos...
...and she's always available for everything that we need.
Si, pues sería muy, muy triste para todos que ella se tuviera que ir...
...it would be sad for all of us if she had to leave...
...y esperemos que nos puedan dar alguna respuesta...
...and we hope that we can get a positive answer from you...
...y gracias por escucharnos.
...and we thank you for listening to us.
We'll have time for just one more group of people and they're from the Osabaire Board Park, Camera, Sukufa, and Kadumu Mayinda. And who are you, I'm sorry, sir?
Mi nombre es Mario Lera.
He's stating his name.
He's not on the list. I don't have anyone else on that list for TOLLER.
Si, me dijeron que...
No.
Pero...
Yes. I'm sorry, that was it for the TOLLER piece, I didn't have anyone else on TOLLER. Okay. We have two people for the OSAB program and then we'll conclude public comments at now. Thank you. Please stop.
Chinese boys are better at math than other people. Muslims hate Christians. Do you ever wash your hair? That's how it got that way, right? I don't want to be her partner because the black on her might rub off. Most gang members are Mexicans and blacks. Want to hear some blonde jokes? I don't want to be his partner. He's too fat. I learned that dark people are that way because they were cursed by the devil. I play violent video games because I like to kill people and steal cars and see a lot of blood, and I really like to see people's heads get blown off. I want to transfer to another school because I always get bullied. These are some of the examples of the divisive statements that we hear at the Balboa Park program on a weekly basis, and I suspect they're heard on playgrounds and in cafeterias all across grade levels in our entire district. When a student reports to school to learn, what we see before us is a whole child, one who brings not only his or her personal knowledge base, but also skills, cultural and social backgrounds, values, experiences, worldviews, and yes, prejudices. As educators, we should not ignore these complex aspects of our students in favor of the all-important academic subjects. Rather, we must value the whole child and all that he or she brings to school and their rich experiences to enhance and guide their academic challenges and foster their critical thinking skills. Having said that, I must ask, when do elementary school teachers have the time not only to address statements such as the ones I read, but to facilitate discussions and guide students to solutions to the problems? How many of you have ever had a deep and open and honest discussion about race, stereotypes, discrimination, violence, or bullying? None of you? All of you? Ten-year-olds are having these discussions at the Balboa Park program simply by meeting other ten-year-olds who simply are being themselves and finding solutions to problems like these.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, peace and blessings. My name is Kadumu Mayenda, and my address is on record. I like to open up by just saying, it's in the moment of a crisis that we come to the true level of our consciousness. And right now, everybody is feeling under stress, under pressure, because there's what we call a budget crisis. But I think that we need to look at the larger picture. As Kamara just said, we have a program that addresses all of the students, at least on the fifth-grade level. Every single student gets to go to the program. We make no exceptions. All the students who are either blind, if they have handicap problems, if they have behavioral problems, whatever the problem, whatever the need is, we accept all of the children. We teach all of the children, and we have the same expectations for all of the children. I think that what we need to look at is that, what is the purpose of the educational system? It is to reinforce and it's to build the community, all right? And if we don't do that, then when we look at our communities, it's when we walk around in fear, okay? And I say that because right now, leadership is important. You know, everybody is in here, they're talking about their program, they're arguing, everybody is up here. But I think that when the leadership is right, it's solid, and it's transparent, we come together with an understanding. Now, we might not like the decision you make, but when we understand why you're making the decision, it's more acceptable. So when we talk about things, so if we talk about the Osabaire program, are we talking about all of the RHR programs? Because the Osabaire is not the only program. So if we're talking about RHR, let's put them all on the table. If we're talking about salaries, let's put all of the figures on the table. Everybody gets put on the table, and then we start to look at and saying, okay, who is relevant to the classroom? Who is relevant to the children? And then we move outward. And if we don't do that, we're going to keep spinning the circles. Everybody's going to keep coming here, week after week, whenever we have the meetings, and they're going to be moaning and groaning because the leadership is not here. So I know that you can do this, and I know we can pull everybody together. Thank you. Peace.
This concludes our public testimony for this section. I'm now calling the meeting to order. The Amigero T C colored guard from Morris High School will now present the colors. Please stand.
Kerry!
Hoo!
Oh, wait!
Hoo!
Help me out!
Hoo!
Boy!
Hoo!
Help me out!
Hoo!
Cut!
Hoo!
Cut!
Hoo!
I pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kerry!
Hoo!
Adar!
Hoo!
Smith!
Hoorah, boy, say!
Thank you very much. Please be seated. Good afternoon. I am Sheila Jackson, President of the Board. I would like to welcome all present today and call the April 28, 2009 regular meeting to order with all board members present. We hope the discussions and decisions you observed today will give you a better understanding and appreciation of the heart and part that you play in setting the course of education in the San Diego Unified School Districts. Agenda for today's meeting are available at both entryways to the auditorium, at the information desk located in the press table, and on the internet at www.sandy.net. In addition to the broadcast on our, in addition, our broadcast of our meetings on ITV and on live webcast, and we are using Board Docs, the web-based program to enhance governance and reduce the amount of paper we generate and provide for better communications with the public. The Board requests that those individuals with pagers and cell phones please turn them off or put them on silent mode while you're in the auditorium, and that during the meeting, please enter and exit the auditorium by using the door at the back or the door to my left in front of the press table. The Board would like to ask for cooperation and compliance with the California Fire Code, which does not allow standing in the back room or in the aisle. We ask that everyone please be seated. The Board welcomes your comments in writing and the public testimony. Public testimony requests are located on the tables to my right inside the front and back entrances of the auditorium. The Board asks that speakers focus their comments on issues and not on individuals. Except as a public testimony request will be closed as each agenda item is called and our discussion begins. Board members and superintendent are interested in your comments. The superintendent or a member of his staff will be responding to the issues we hear today. If you wish to address the Board today and your name is not on the blue sheet, or you have not already submitted a public request form, please complete the form and submit it to Ms. Ward. Speakers on agenda items will be called to speak under the discussion of an agenda item. Agenda item testimony is limited to 20 minutes per consent or action item. Align for a maximum of 10 minutes per opposing viewpoint and a maximum of three minutes per speaker. No deferral of time is allowed. Non-agenda items was heard at 5:00 PM and will be heard at the end of the meeting. Testimony is limited to a maximum of 15 minutes per item and three minutes per speaker. No deferral time is allowed. The Board operates under the robust rules of order which confer upon the governing body and the added participation proceeding in a civil and courteous manner. At this time, would the ASB student representatives please introduce themselves and tell us what's going on at your school?
Hi, my name is Lena Bien, and I'm a student from Crawford High School. What's going on in my school right now? Next week, we're preparing for the CST testing, also AP exams. We're also having a blood drive later on this year, and that's about it.
Good afternoon, board members present, Superintendent Greer, and community members present today. My name is Jose Gerardo Bojorkes, President of the Council, Vice President, and also President of Kearney ASB. Academically, at my school, we have this week to start testing. We also have some other senior exhibitions from the school of SET. Socially, we are having elections for next year's candidates, and we are also having Kearney Idol coming soon. We are also having a small school softball tournament to unify our four small schools in Kearney Complex. And I wanted to take this time to thank Board Member John DeBeck for giving me that letter of recommendation, and that's about it for my school. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Nakamura, please.
Yes, thank you. The Board has recently decided to have student presentations before these board meetings, which I think is an excellent way for us to really highlight the students that are in our schools. This afternoon, it's my pleasure to introduce school members, student members from Sarah High School. Introducing Battalion Commanding Officer Nicholas Perez. He's a cadet commander who will individually introduce eight cadets and recognize them for their accomplishments and highlight their future plans. Four of the cadets will then finish with a brief drill team performance, which, considering what happened with the flag, maybe we could have them do up here, you know, in the front row. You all right? That was a close call there earlier, so.
Right here. They'll be better down below.
Will they? Okay, all right.
You won't hurt anybody down here.
Madam President, members of the Board, and Dr. Greer, thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Cadet Commander Nicholas Perez. I'm the Battalion Commanding Officer at Sarah High School, and I am the Brigade Executive Officer of the San Diego Unified School District. I am the head of a class of 2009 which consists of 16 seniors with a combined average GPA of 3.26, six cadets of which are going into the military, eight are going to college, and two who are undecided. I have a 4.5 GPA, and I have qualified for the Sarah honor roll. I've received an NRTC scholarship for $180,000, as well as the trustee scholarship at the University of San Diego for $70,000. I have competed on each of our 10 teams, and I have also competed twice at the Navy Nationals competition in Pensacola, Florida. Three of my cadets and myself attended a previous board meeting to discuss the importance and the value of the JROTC program. Today, I have proof that the program is beneficial to high school students. My battalion executive officer is not here tonight because she is ill. She is a fourth-year cadet. She holds a 4.2 GPA. She has competed with us at the Navy National Competition and graduated from the Navy NJROTC Leadership Academy. She also received the NRTC scholarship, as well as the Presidential Scholarship, for $40,000 at the University of San Diego. Cadet Petty Officer Second Class Gary Roby is an NS-1, which means this is his first year in the NJROTC program. He currently holds a 4.13 GPA. He's one of our four cadets who have received the NRTC scholarship for $180,000. He will attend the University of Temple, Florida. Lieutenant Ryan Demers is our Alpha Company Commander, and this is his fourth year in the NRTC program. Unfortunately, he is not here tonight because he is competing at the varsity volleyball game, but, other words, he holds a 4.2 GPA and qualified for the Sarah honor roll. He also competes with us at the Navy National Competition. He is a Leadership Academy graduate and also received the NRTC scholarship. More importantly, he was accepted to the United States Naval Academy. Due to the limited amount of space, I have three cadets here today that will be performing for you. They are three of the 13 members on our unarmed exhibition drill team. One of the members is Cadet Master Chief Petty Officer Stephanie Estrada, a fourth-year cadet. She is our Battalion Command Master Chief and the commander of the unarmed exhibition drill team. She holds a 2.83 GPA. She competed with us at the Navy Nationals competition and also graduated from the Leadership Academy. She was accepted to the Academy of Arts University in San Francisco. Cadet Lieutenant Chelsea Poli is a fourth-year cadet and our Battalion Operations Officer. She holds a 3.17 GPA. She competed with us at the Navy Nationals Competition and graduated from the Leadership Academy. After graduation, she will join the United States Navy Six-Year Intelligence Program. Finally, Cadet Lieutenant Destiny Brittingham is a third-year cadet and plans to stay in the program next year. She holds a 3.5 GPA and qualified for the Sarah honor roll. She is currently our Bravo Company Commander. She competed with us at the Navy Nationals and graduated from Leadership Academy. Now, I'd like to present the Unarmed Exhibition Tandem Team, commanded by Cadet Master Chief Petty Officer Stephanie Estrada.
Team, hut, hut, hooray, hut! Team, hut, hut, hut! Stand high, introduce yourselves. Let us introduce ourselves to the coast, empty. Hooray, just band, they're up and in. Penning, hut! Hut, pipe, hut! Petty, hut! Hut, pipe, hut! We're, hut! Hut, pipe, team, hut! Let's eat, hooray, hut! You like that, don't ya?
Yes, we did. All right. Now, that's the way, I know you're happy, Ms. Nakamura, but don't stay too long out there, okay? Come on back. Anyway, we're going to continue on with the meeting, and we're up to our Section C, Report of Closed Session Actions. Superintendent's informational report. Superintendent, please do Item CO1, CO2, and then we'll go into CO3. Thank you.
Thank you, President Jackson. Under Item CO1, I'm pleased to report that tonight, by a 5-0 vote, approved the appointment of Ken Layton as...
Put your mic on.
Yes, ma'am, I'll just move up.
Thank you.
By a vote of 5-0, the Board approved the appointment of Ken Layton to Controller and Sue Weir to Manager of Payroll, and by a vote of 4-1, Art Hamby to Officer Strategic Sourcing and Cassia Cosata to Manager Insurance Risk and Risk Services. Also, tonight, under CO2, under Superintendent's Information Report, as most of the folks in our community have heard, swine flu has been detected in five San Diego County residents. Three of them are children. All of the individuals have mild symptoms. The County Office of Public Health Service has not declared a pandemic flu emergency, nor have they recommended the closure of any San Diego Unified School District, Schools. Here in the district, we provided information to all schools on the swine flu in all of our district's primary languages, and will soon have a dedicated webpage for our swine flu responses containing regular updated information. For folks that are interested, they can also call the San Diego For folks that are interested, they can also call the San Diego County Swine Flu Hotline at 858-715-2250. Today, right before the Board meeting, I sent out a phone message to all of our employees and all of our parents in the district, talking about what we have done as an organization to be proactive in this regard. I think the most important thing we can do at this time is to be proactive and focus on prevention. We have made it very clear that if students are sick, that parents should keep the students at home. If they come to school and they have the symptoms of swine flu, such as fever of 100 degrees, cough, reset of a cough and some sore throat, or a runny nose and congested nose, two of those symptoms together should be taken seriously. And if we have students at school that exhibit any of those symptoms, we will contact their parents and ask the parents to come pick them up from school. If parents have a child that exhibits two or more of those symptoms, we're asking them to keep the children at home for up to seven days or until those symptoms go away. We're also asking that they have a doctor's excuse before they come back to school, verifying that they do not have swine flu. We also are making sure that all of our parents and students know where we have free clinics that are located in our school district, because we are concerned that some children may not have access to a regular family doctor, and we want to make sure that that's covered. Just want the Board of the Community to know that we are taking this very seriously. We don't want to overreact, but we want to be proactive. I've asked Bill Koba, and he's working on this, with Drew Rollins, to make sure that all of our restrooms have hand soap and towels. That's one of the most important preventative measures that children and all of our employees can take, is to wash their hands on a regular basis. As simple as that may sound, it's extremely important. We're also looking at trying to provide our teachers with handy wipe wraps that are disinfectants. So, again, we're taking it seriously, but we are not overacting. Also, want the Board to know that if a student in one of our schools has been determined that they, in fact, do have swine flu, we have to report that immediately to the county health authorities, and they, not the school district, will decide whether to close schools or not. It's our understanding that if we do find a case in a school, that that one case has grounds to close that school for up to seven days. So, just want the Board and the Community to know that we're on top of this, and we take it very seriously, but at the same time, we don't want to overreact.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Greer.
We also, President Jackson, at this time, are going to request that we just pull Item CO3. Ms. Deal is not here this evening, and we will talk about that at a future date when she might be able to be with us.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
We'll pull that item then. Next item is to adopt the Board Agenda for this evening. Can I have a motion, please?
No move.
Remove, second?
Second.
Okay, please vote. Okay, we're on to our happy agenda then. The next item is District EO1, Approval of Meetings, Minutes of Regular Meetings, March 24th, April 14th, Special Meetings, March 26th, and March 31st.
Move approval, second.
Move the second, please vote. Excellent. Okay, the next item, we move to our F Items. The first one is Informational Reports. We'll start with Ms. DeBeck.
Well, I had a nice discussion with the lawyer cluster last night. We talked about the budget and how they were expressing some frustrations about some of the things that I think we will be dealing with probably today. One of them was strongly recommending against sharing of principles, and the other was very concerned about increasing class sizes. In the commentary, I pointed out that it's a board decision and that, you know, the majority rules in this district, and that's the way things are. So, while I might agree with them or not agree with them, we'll see how the Board acts as a whole on that issue or those issues. I think they did understand, although I think the comments and issues were very much like I've seen around the community, of people who are grasping and understanding how really immense this problem of budgeting is that we have. And there were comments made, and I don't want to demean the people, I think they're very interested in the future success of the district, but there were many of them who were commenting about how we ought to go lobby in Sacramento, and I think it's a bit... I told them then, it's a little bit late. You know, you can't grasp a straw at the end when you're drowning. You've got to be ready to throw out the life preservers to deal with the real issues and to hope for salvation from somewhere else. It's about time we started swimming, you know? Okay.
Yeah, well, similar to Mr. DeBeck, I'd like to thank the communities of McKinley Elementary School, Florence Elementary, Jefferson, Bernie, and the community at the Memorial Academy, which I've had a chance to get out and listen to over the past couple of weeks. Again, similar, you know, incredible ability, I think, on the part of parents, teachers, people at the school communities to articulate what the impact would be to their schools of, for instance, having a halftime principal. The folks at Florence were extremely, and Jefferson, were extremely clear about the difference that their principal makes being on campus all day, you know, including individual assistance that a principal provides to families and, you know, in addition to looking at the whole school. I think the community at McKinley was very clear about the impact that increasing class sizes will have on the community that people have worked so hard to build over the past few years, which is actually attracting parents into the school who had previously, from the neighborhood, had previously not been attending. So, I do want to thank those communities again, and I look forward to the discussions that we're going to have, you know, with other schools in District D over the next few weeks. I do think there's a very clear place, however, for, we can call it lobbying, or we can call it creating a picture, for the people who represent us in Sacramento. There are decisions being made right now by folks in Sacramento about how to, for instance, allocate the federal stimulus money. That means millions and tens of millions of dollars, you know? If you choose one way versus another, this school district, you know, could receive, you know, 20 or more million dollars more if folks in Sacramento choose to allocate those resources in a particular way. We've got to remember, and I know everybody up here is aware of this, that the state is projecting at least an additional $8 billion deficit, and potentially, if a few of the initiatives on the ballot don't pass, potentially a 14, additional $14 billion deficit for the 2009-10 year, on top of, you know, the deficit that, you know, they tried to close a few months ago. It's very important that our leaders in Sacramento understand that if they've got additional work to do to close a $14 billion deficit, that they don't close that deficit by coming, you know, to our schools and asking for deeper cuts than the cuts that they've already asked for. They need to hear directly from us that they've got to find other ways, you know, to balance that budget than to keep coming after K-12 education. We've got an opportunity, two nights from tonight, Thursday night at 7:00 PM at Kearney High School, to meet with members of the San Diego delegation, the folks who represent us in Sacramento. And every meeting that we've had as a Board, where folks have come and talked about, you know, the impact of these cuts to your school communities, the times that we've been able to come out to the schools and listen to you, incredibly important to us as a Board to hear that. It's just as important for our folks who represent us in Sacramento to hear directly from you. So, we've got an opportunity to do that Thursday night at 7:00 at Kearney High School, and I really hope that everybody can turn out to that and come with your stories and come prepared to be as articulate as I know you can be, to talk about why we need in Sacramento going forward, people to be fighting for our public schools.
Thank you. Ms. Nakamura? Yes, I can only echo everything that has been said already with regard to the budget. We are facing some very serious decisions, and I've been concerned about this for quite some time. I do believe that our schools understand that, but they do need to get out the teachers and the parents. Principals need to stand up and let people know what's on their mind. There's an awful lot at risk. I'm not going to take too much longer. I am receiving an award tonight from the California Music Educators Association, which my family is very pleased with the title of this. It's called the Fortissimo Award, which means to be very loud, and my family thinks that's particularly appropriate. So, it's... But it's given to elected officials that speak up for music education, and, you know, that... Thank you. So, it's going to make me blush, which isn't hard to do, but it's a terribly important organization. CMEA represents music throughout the state of California, and terribly, terribly important voice. But that's, I think, every year, we say this with budget cuts, that this is what is at risk, and in this particular instance, it really is. We need to stand up. We all need to be fortissimo. Thank you. Okay, Evans?
Thank you. I'd also like to report on some community meetings. I really appreciate everybody that turns out to these meetings, but not everybody can make it. And recently, we attended a meeting with some other Board members at Memorial Academy, where the parents, the teachers, really articulated very well what their concerns were about the school, their particular school. And this week, I was very pleased to be at Spreckel's bilingual magnet and was able to see a lot of what is being accomplished, a microcosm of what's being accomplished in the San Diego district by integrating the schools, by having language programs, but most of all, by having parents and teachers working very hard together to make a very good school. And I think it's very important for us to do all of this on a community level in all of the local communities. You have to be careful not to believe everything you read in the newspapers, particularly on the editorial pages. If you believe all that, you would probably think that I am a millionaire by now. But I think what we need to do is pay very close attention together to this budget situation. We're all in this together. I know that when we had to pass a preliminary budget on March 15th, this was just a couple of days after the state had given us millions of dollars of extra cuts, and we had to put everything, pretty much, that we could find on the table. We've had time since then and during the next couple of months to look in a very deliberate fashion, because this is the time when we decide what are our priorities. If these are the funds that we have, this is how we are going to spend them. And a lot of people have written in about their feelings about the budget cuts, but I especially appreciate the people who took the time to try to find some solutions. For example, saying, "I want to save this particular program, but here's an idea about how we could save a little bit of money," because we all have to work in this together and make sacrifices together. I think that's... Another thing I want to say in all of this is that as we get very involved when something affects our own particular school, our particular program, something for your child, when the budget comes up, but I hope that everybody will not go away. If something is restored, you just kind of fade back in the background, because we need to keep fighting day by day for our public schools. The funding of public education is still very much under attack, and I want to reiterate what Ms. Pereira was saying about everybody coming out on Thursday night at 7:00 at Kearney High School. This is an opportunity where the legislators can see real people, real-life situations about what's going on in our schools. I would love it if the bands would show up, if orchestras, if ROTC, magnet schools, everybody kind of coming in and showing what it is, what our public schools are, so they have a real picture of this. There are definitely on our San Diego legislative team some people who have been very supportive of education, and we really need to back them up and encourage them to keep doing that, as well as persuading some of the others that are there. So, I just want to encourage everybody to stay involved, and in my particular District A, we're going to, on May 9th, be having a meeting of an advisory committee, bringing together people from the various clusters in Claremont, both Claremont and Madison, University City, and Mira Mesa, to talk about how the local communities can have more influence on the decisions that we make at a district level. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, I would certainly like to congratulate Ms. Nakamura on her accomplishment. I'm sorry about that, for being loud. But I also want to really, again, echo that we are having our cluster meetings. I think, I know that Crawford's Cluster Meeting is this coming Monday at 6:00, and then Lincoln Cluster is the second Monday, and Morris Cluster is the third Monday of the month in District E. We have been going to schools together because we are United Board, Unified Board, and we're trying to make sure that the people know that we are working together. But this is a budget crisis, and while we want to keep everyone's programs, we're not going to be able to. We would love to keep everything in the district, we're not going to be able to. We appreciate people that call and offer suggestions, because that is what the big push is for now. The big push is that we come up with creative ideas to keep all of our schools open, all of our staff employed. So, on Thursday night, what we want the state to see is we thank our delegation for San Diego, because they have been very diligent in Sacramento on our behalf. They have always stood in the gap for us. They've argued for us, so we need to thank them, but we need to also give them strength to continue to fight. Many of you know that we have a special election coming up on May 19th. I hope that you will turn out and vote for that election. A lot of things are depending upon that election for us. But the other thing that we have to say very loud and very clear to Sacramento is they're not going to balance the budget on the backs of children. Our children are our future for the state, and when the state is in such an economic turmoil, what they need to do really now is invest to ensure that as we come out, we can sustain it. And recently, I shared this with, you know, people on the panel, because they said that they are recruiting people from other countries, not even other states, other countries, to come in and work. And I said, "If you would take that money and invest it in our schools, you would have workers right here in our city." And I encourage everybody, every business, every nonprofit, that before you go looking someplace else, you look at our city, and you look at our schools, and you look at where they need help, and you be willing to stand up and help us. And we know that you can maybe find someone to come in and do the job a little bit less and make a little bit more profit. But profit is not the end-all, be-all, because that's why we're sitting where we are today. And if we invest in our communities, in our schools, then everyone will be successful. And I want to thank the Board. I want to thank Superintendent's staff. I know they've been working hard the last few days, looking for creative solutions, and the Board is constantly pushing for them to look for creative solutions. And so, I would encourage each and every one to continue to participate. I look forward to seeing you all on Thursday evening, and with that, I'll continue on with the meeting of the night. Our next item is Item FO2, which is the District's initial proposal to reopen Police Officers' Association Article IX Health and Welfare Benefits for the '09-10 school year. This is a first read, and Superintendent Greer?
Basically, we need a motion and a second and approval by the Board. This is for information only. All of, quite frankly, FO2, FO3, and FO...
This is... It says they're all information. Is that a change, then?
I'm sorry. FO2 is a first reading.
Okay.
And basically, provisions of the California Government Code require that districts and employee organizations publicly notice proposals before commencing negotiations. And basically, this is a notice with our Police Officers' Association that talks about our intent to reopen the Memorandum of Understanding to Negotiate Changes to Article IX Health and Welfare Benefits.
Thank you. Any comments from any Board members? And as before you speak, I just want to take a personal note and thank our POA, our social police officers. They're always here. They always work, and not only here, but at school sites as well, and so, thank you very much for your support. Thank you. Yes, Mr. Bevan?
I just wanted to comment that one of the things that we had discussed was removing the first item, making changes that allow the purchase from the most cost-effective resource, meaning that we were not going to go outside of... We were not proposing to go outside of VIBA.
That's correct.
That is correct.
Okay.
Thank you. We'll make that change on the item. Any other items for FO2? Item FO3 is also informational item. This is for CSCA and OSS.
And it's a very similar type of line.
Okay, very good. Okay, Item FO4 is a resolution for reduction of classified services, and this is an action item, so I need a motion and a second. I have speakers? And I have speakers.
No move.
Remove. I have a second?
I have a comment.
Okay. There's no second? Okay. Ms. DeBeck? Ms. Tidbeck, and then we're going to put a comment.
I have a comment if there's no second. These haven't been administrative positions, but...
I second.
I heard you. Okay.
Okay, well, you know, we're facing some severe problems, and there's got to be some kind of consequences to our staff. Some of the proposals that are on the table are subject to bargaining, some of them are subject to questioning of the total amounts. This is around a concept of redirecting and reorganizing the departments, and I think these are appropriate layoffs that would help us become more efficient. Not happy to do it, but that's not what I'm here for.
We have three speakers. We have Jane Balsa, Sylvia Alvarez, and Jeannie Steg. Would you please come forward? You have three minutes each, please.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening, Madam President Jackson, Vice President Barrera, Board of Trustees, Superintendent Greer. My name is Jane Balsa. I live at 5017 Perotti Drive, San Diego, California. I'm also the president of the Chapter 759 Para-educator. Our Chapter 759 has an opportunity to work closely with Director Classified Personnel, Donna Sarmenta, and Director Labor Relation with Willie Sherbrooke for the past 10 years in negotiation and labor issues. As the president of the Para-educator Bargaining Unit, I want to at least share with you that while we may not always agree on the issues, that we recognize and appreciate the level of competence and integrity that they have exhibited in dealing with the Para-educator. I hope as you make this decision today, you will consider our recommendation to retain Donna Sarmenta and Willie Sherbrooke. Thank you very much.
Good evening, President Jackson, Superintendent Greer, board members. My name is Sylvia Alvarez. My address is on record, and I'm speaking on behalf of the OTBS unit, Chapter 788. My question to you is why lay off the Director of Labor Relations and the Director of Classified Personnel? It appears that the positions have been eliminated and new positions created that are very similar. These individuals have the history and knowledge of the district. We're in the middle of negotiations, understand the reorganization. But for our unit in particular, these layoffs, if they're implemented, will cause bumping in our unit and layoffs. This is something that the board promised us would not happen. So on behalf of OTBS, and personally, I ask you to reconsider these two eliminations. Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Jeannie Steg, Secondive Director of the Administrators Association. I'm a little confused right at the moment, because I heard Dr. Greer approve the appointments of four of the managers, four of the directors into new manager positions, yet the manager positions that are being proposed are under IO3, and I was not aware that they had been approved yet. So I'm a little confused how they could have been appointed without the approval yet of the manager position. But we'll see what happens when you discuss that under IO3. Actions such as the elimination or the abolishment and/or the reassigning one's position should reflect proper personnel practices, and Procedure 7765 and 7560 do not appear to have been visited. We also have an MOU in effect that should be followed when one is being demoted or eliminated or laid off. There must be guidelines that are not vulnerable to the shifting political winds. You said no layoffs, but you apparently did not mean this for directors. You said no layoffs, and apparently you didn't mean this for managers, nor did you probably mean it for supervisors and/or any other member of the management team. No matter what you call the action, it eventually will result in layoffs, and the action today, as you just previously heard, will trigger the bumping process. In the recent changes of positions being put forward today, there is no consistency or equity in the manner in which people are being treated. Some folks are being appointed to a new position, others are being told they can apply. For others, their position's already gone away. Please take a look at the Tucker versus Grossmont, a recent court decision that may be applicable, and also remind yourselves about the outcome of the Burson versus Bernstein. Equity, fairness, and morale are at stake. And how management employees are treated is a reflection on the type of organization one works in. I didn't notice on today's agenda as well classifications, because when one applies for a classification, reclassification, it is with the intent of honoring the work that's been done. There's a Procedure 7540 in place that guides this process, and some of these reclasses have saved the district a considerable amount of money. In regards to demotions, layoffs, eliminating one's job, and denying reclassifications, the desire to attract, recruit, select, develop, and retain top professionals in their respective fields will be increasingly difficult. In summary, I'd like to paraphrase Collins' research in his book, Good to Great. To say that those who build great school districts understand that the ultimate throttle on improvement for any great school district is not what other districts can do better or the instructional products and services used. It is one thing above all others, and that is the ability to get and keep enough of the right people.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, basically, this item, board members, as you may recall, we were tasked with trying to reorganize our central office and reduce the number of central office administrators to try to right-size the organization. We're continuing to do that. That has not been easy work, because we do care deeply about all of our employees. I want you to know that we're fully aware of the Tucker situation and the Tucker law case, and we've been working with our legal counsel, to make sure that we don't violate anyone's rights. We want to treat people, and we're going to treat people with dignity and respect. Trying to reorganize the central staff and keep the same positions with the same job descriptions is very difficult. You can't reduce 30 people from a department, for example, and have the same people doing the same work. You have to combine the work that some people were doing. This particular situation, our staff has come to you, they have discussed this with you in depth, you have heard this before, you have even informally approved this, and the actual job descriptions in an appropriate manner. So this is not new. This is something you've seen before, this is something that has been done by staff with careful review and careful study. What we're saying clearly, anyone in our organization has rights to reapply for these new jobs and will be treated with respect, they will be interviewed, they will be given every opportunity to demonstrate to our chief officers that they have the skill set that are needed once these jobs have been merged together. It does, as Ms. Jackson has often said, when you become leaner, you do have to have, as Mystique has said, the right people that have the ability to do a job where you now don't have just one set of responsibilities, but you have many. So again, this is our effort to trim central staff and to get right-sized, and quite frankly, we plan to continue to come back to you in the coming weeks with additional reorgs of departments and continue to reduce the number of employees as we try to find savings to balance our budget.
What other comments? Dr. Evans?
Yes, I understand the situation that you're in, Superintendent Greer, because one of the things that we have said is we want the money to be closest to classroom, to the school sites, which is most helping the children. And I think there is a general sentiment that we do need to reduce the central operations of the district more in a supportive role as the teachers and other support personnel are out at the school sites. And then, of course, once we do this, it's a difficult and painful situation to reorganize, but I think it's very important to do it.
Ms. Tidbeck?
Well, one of the things that I try to do, and I did this time, is not look at names, because I have a lot of friends in the district that I've known for a long time. Having reviewed the list, I still won't change my vote on this, but to those that know me know that I'm concerning myself mainly with the operation of the district the most efficient way we can do it. So to those that are on this list that I know personally, my apologies, but I'm still not changing my vote. On another front, if we put these up against things like sharing principles, closing programs that communities care about, then I think it puts in a different context. And I have to say, you know, despite, I don't hold the same hope that all these people are going to save us, that are going to come and visit our budget meetings. I may be the resident cynic, but they had plenty of chance in Sacramento to help us, and they didn't. And now us coming down to say, "Oh, they're going to come down and visit us, our local schools, and that's going to change the way it worked," I don't think so. So we're on our own, we're going to have to swim across this really bad, not even an English channel, but whatever, to try to survive. And, you know, I'm sorry to you guys, I really care about you, but somebody's got to go. So this is it.
Any more board member comments? Please vote. That item passes 5-0. The next item is Item FO5, Resolution Supporting Proposition 1B, Education Funding Payment Plan for the May 19 statewide special election on the ballot.
You have to head from E to F. I'm in from, I'm sorry. You're correct.
Okay. All right. If I...
Excuse me.
Your ears are red, Doc.
Yeah, well, I think most people know, on May 19th, we've got a special election to look at a series of measures that the legislature and governor agreed upon to put on the ballot, partly as an attempt to close the budget gap in February. One of these measures, Proposition 1B, what it does is it acknowledges the fact that the state for the past two years has failed to meet its constitutional obligations to fully fund public schools under Proposition 98. And there is a dispute, legal dispute, as there, you know, always is, in Sacramento about exactly how much money the state owes the public schools. What Proposition 1B does is it defines that amount of money as $9.3 billion that the state will be required, starting two years from now, to start to repay our school districts, again, in the money that they owe us, because they have failed to meet their obligation to fully fund public schools. The whole package, Proposition 1A to 1F, is, again, an attempt to solve a budget problem, and some people would argue that it's systemic reform. I don't believe personally that the package of propositions 1A through 1F represents systemic reform. I think systemic reform will come about when somebody finally deals with the fact that we've got a requirement that two-thirds of the legislature has to approve a budget. When we get out of that, that's systemic reform, because it allows a third of the legislature to hold the rest of us hostage. People can argue either way, and we've had a lot of good discussions in the community about the full range of package, the full range of, you know, the propositions in this package, 1A through 1F, and people can argue about the merits of any particular one of these items. Proposition 1B has no formal opposition, and I think it is very important that the voters of the state make a statement on May 19th that says that the state of California owes our public school districts $9.3 billion and requires the state to start to pay that money back. So that's why I believe the school board should endorse this proposition.
Move approval. The motion?
Second.
Second. And Tidbeck?
As I understand it, this Prop 1B is contingent on the passing of 1A.
Yeah.
So then, are you saying that you're endorsing Prop 1A?
I, so first of all, this is not about a personal endorsement, this is what I'm advocating for the board to adopt. I'm not advocating that the board supports Proposition 1A. We might, if there's a majority of the board that wants to do that, that's, you know, obviously the decision of the board. And I do understand that Prop 1B is contingent on Prop 1A, on Prop 1A passing. Prop 1A is a controversial measure, and people can argue for and against it, and I'm happy to, you know, engage in that discussion. I think what I'm simply suggesting is that the board makes a statement that we support Prop 1B because we are, you know, saying publicly that the state of California has a debt to our public schools and needs to repay it, and that's what Prop 1B does. I acknowledge, Mr. Tidbeck, that if Prop 1B passes without Prop 1A, it's largely a symbolic measure, and we can have a discussion again about Prop 1A, but I think for purposes of what I'm advocating to the school board, it's...
Yeah, I want to, I'd like to finish this discussion. Okay, we're a member of an organization called California School Board Association, and has an organization called the Educational Legal Alliance. And they deal with, they deal in court and have sued the state on mandated costs, for example. I have a, I really don't think I like this idea that we're telling the state how much we'll settle for, when this is basically saying, you know, "All you have to do is give us this amount of money, and here we, we'll indemnify you of any further kind of obligations around the mandates of Prop 98." Prop 98 has in it the same possibilities, because it's a constitutional amendment, and very much like the mandated costs, that the Educational Legal Alliance, which we are regularly a member of, can go forward and get, as a result, a lawsuit. We already did this on mandated costs, the settlement was less than the total amount, but it was more than people were suggesting that we could get just by offering a deal. I'm afraid that saying this and supporting this 1B is premature, since there hasn't even been a lawsuit filed to try and recover the entire amounts that we're entitled to under the Proposition 98 provisions. So, you know, it seems to me like it looks to say, "Well, give us some money and we'll go away." I'm not ready to do that. So, you know, you may have 4-1, but you're not going to have a majority vote.
Dr. Evans?
Yeah, I have a legal question for our attorney, which is, I'm sure not his area of expertise necessarily, but we have the issue of 1B that is talking about repaying a certain amount of money. I'm not sure that that necessarily invalidates, I don't think the language of the measure is such that it invalidates any potential lawsuits by districts against the state in terms of monies that are owed to it by previous laws.
No, it wouldn't. This action, if this is approved by the board or other boards, and I know there are other school boards that have taken positions on Proposition 1B, I don't think would impact the outcome of any remedy that a judge might award if there was success in litigation.
And beyond the board endorsing, in terms of if 1B passes, does that invalidate any lawsuit?
I would say no unless 1B says that it waives any further action, which I don't believe it does. That's the only, that's my only hesitation, but it would have to be, it would have to be in the ballot measure itself. If there was an additional amount that was owed, then based on Prop 98, then unless the ballot measure says otherwise, there could be an action to get the rest of it, yeah.
Right, so my, because my thought is we can approve this in terms of getting some of the money repaid and still retain our rights to sue for more.
Ms. Barrera?
Yeah, I mean, there's nothing in, there's nothing in Proposition 1B which says this is a settlement and waives the rights of school boards to sue for more money under Prop 98. In fact, the legal dispute about the amount of money that the state owes to school districts under Prop 98 ranges between one definition of about a billion and a half dollars to the high definition, which is $9.3 billion. What Proposition 1B does is it funds the high definition of $9.3 billion. And what it basically does is it says, you know, "Forget the legal dispute between how much is owed between 9.3 and 1.6, pay us the 9.3 that you owe us." That's what Prop 1B does. It doesn't invalidate, or it doesn't, you know, tie our hands to, you know, further legal action.
There's no more board discussion. Please vote. Okay, that passes 4-1. We move on to the G items, student instructional matters. The first one is GO1, Proposal for Adoption of Textbooks and Instructional Materials for the '09-10 School Year. Dr. Greer?
Thank you, President Jackson. Tonight, our staff and I are recommending the purchase of K-2 mathematics materials becau- Because the district has postponed the adoption of K-5 mathematics materials, we must purchase these K-2 consumables in order to meet the requirements of the Williams Act.
Move approval. Second it. Any more discussion?
No.
We do have speakers, I'm sorry, we have some speakers. Thank you. You want to go ahead and speak, Dr. Evans, or other speakers?
I just, yeah, I'll make a comment really quickly, which has to do with, I guess it's more information from the superintendent. I know at the last meeting we said we weren't willing to release all that money for the textbooks, and you've come back with the consumables, which is good, and also this digital curriculum instruction, which is also very appropriate. I'm also interested in knowing if there are other, investigate there are other specific particular needs at schools in terms of a certain type of book, or if one text was just determined across the board to be very ineffective. And we were talking about before about just updating books, and it's the new issue, and how much has algebra changed, and that type of thing, but I just want to make sure that those specific needs are met. And in particular, if there's not necessarily a district-wide adoption, but if there's a shortage of books or anything like that, that that would be addressed.
Well, by law, we have no option, and we cannot have a shortage of books. The Williams Act will not allow that to happen. That's something that we're audited on an annual basis. And last year when we were audited, we reported to you that we were in compliance as a district. We have a textbook selection committee here at the district that's made up of teachers. This board, and I concur, that decisions ought to be bottom-up, and it ought to, any kind of good leadership is a combination of bottom-up and top-down. You're providing, I think, very strong leadership from the top of the organization. Our staff is trying to certainly supplement and add to that. But these textbook adoptions, the recommendations came from our teachers. And so, basically, we listen to them. I, as a superintendent, and I don't think anyone on my staff has the day-to-day experience with textbooks to know when a textbook is dated or when it no longer is meeting the needs of students. I know, I'm like you, I don't want to adopt a textbook just because it's up for adoption. I think that's a waste of money. At the same time, I do know we do have differing needs of kids. I do know we adopt different courses, like sometimes advanced placement courses. Tonight, we're asking you to approve some new courses, again, that were generated from teachers in schools that have bubbled up through our committee process to you. I do know that you have some speakers tonight, I understand, and I didn't realize you do, but I see that you do. And Dr. Morris is here, and Chuck may be in a better position to answer your question directly than I am, or they may be, since they served on those committees. So I'll call Dr. Chuck Morris, sir.
Yes, if you don't mind.
Thank you.
Aida Ortiz, Deborah McNulty, Alan Saval, Wayne Bartos, Bonnie Schmidt, Ray Adair, David Movey, Imani Robinson, and Kate Anderson. Okay? Okay, Aida Ortiz, you want to start off?
Good evening. I'm Bonnie Schmigay, and I live at 4007 Rees de Court in San Diego. I'm here as a parent of a 10th grader. I'm also here as a community member, and I'm also here as a college instructor and counselor. And I came here to support the proposal, but then I noticed it only included the K through 2 books, and I have the proposal on March 24th that included a lot more than that, textbooks across K through 12. And I'm very, very concerned that these books are being cut, books and technology. The newer books have the technology with them, the CDs, the older books don't. I can give you an example of that with my own son, who hated biology in, as the first fall semester because the book did not match the materials that the teachers were putting on the internet, so even terms were different. And it wasn't until the second semester, when they were able to purchase some books at the school, that it matched, that all of a sudden my son blossomed, and he started to love biology. But this didn't happen when we had a very poor textbook in the fall with no technology attached to it. I was under the impression that the lottery funds have some money attached to instructional supplies that it can only be used for textbooks and this kind of technology. So this money needs to be going for this. As a college professor, I can tell you, every instructor requires textbooks, they are not obsolete like the typewriter. They require them. In fact, we've had situations where students will come from high-tech high who have not had a textbook, and we have problems with them getting back into the textbook mode. It's not a good thing. And we, as parents, we need to see the textbooks so that we can, we can share with our students and help them through their classes and help them, help understand what they're going through. And if we don't have good textbooks in the classroom, this is going to be a very, very difficult thing. And we need them for this fall, so I'm really concerned that this is not going through because I can see that maybe we won't even have any new textbooks. The Spanish books are like eight years old, they're falling apart, there's no workbook attached. The new ones have workbooks, they have CDs. AP doesn't have, won't have a book. I thought we want AP in our district, I thought that was a priority. They won't have any books. So I'm really concerned about this, and I hope you will reconsider. Thank you very much.
Now, Sally, Sally, excuse me, you signed up for GO2, we're still on GO1.
No, she's on GO2.
We're on GO1, though.
They put me on the wrong one.
Okay, mine is old, I'm sorry. Okay, go ahead.
I'm Sally Smith, I live in San Diego, California. Trustees, please approve the books for K through 2, and also bring back the other books that our children and teachers are waiting for. Trustee Sheila Jackson opened the doors for parents to review materials at the IMC. She'll remember that very well, demanding more days, more hours for us to go look at these books, and we have been. Over 150 teachers reviewed the books, our ELAC parents and students wanted to see the new books, and the curriculum office brought them out for us to look at. Look at the Spanish book that Ms. Schmigay was talking about, okay? There's tape holding these books together, some of the pages are missing. We need new books. We have classrooms with smart boards, but there will be no online tutorials for them because you haven't approved those materials. Making everything high-tech will take time and money and planning, but right now, a lot of our families do not have computers that can access even the CDs or the online versions of these books. Mrs. Jackson opened the door to parents so we could review these books and study them, and we took advantage of that. Please don't slam the door on us now. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Imani Robinson. I am a parent of twin boys at Crown Point Junior Academy, Music Academy, and I'm here for several reasons. There's different things that are being taken away, which I think are fundamental to a child's education, and one most importantly, are books. I know that when children get new books, the respect they have for a book, and when they get something that's already destroyed and torn, they're not going to give it the respect that it deserves. The children deserve new books, we're talking about the budget crisis, but books are fundamental. Being a college student, books changed every semester, every year, and for these children to have to suffer with the same book for six years, and now you're saying your goal is to not replace those books and for them to have to keep them for another eight years, I think that will be detrimental to their learning. Like, the other parents have also spoke on the technology. The technology is definitely important to broaden their education, and my biggest concern are children in school without books. I don't think that, I don't even think it's possible for children to learn without books, and that's really all I have to say.
My name, my name is Wayne Bartos, and I live in San Diego, California. Members of the board and Superintendent Greer, I would like to, first of all, give you my thanks for taking away the cuts from the classroom from this horrible budget crisis that the district is facing, and I know it's a hard decision to make, but I want to thank you for keeping our teachers in the classroom. I'm a retired teacher, I've spent 32 years with San Diego Unified, teaching at both the middle school and the high school level. I now work for a private university here in Southern California for their teacher education program, and I also mentor those teachers, candidates in San Diego Unified. I would like to speak for the adoption of the K-2 mathematics material, but I would also like to bring my concerns for the creation of the digital curriculum and instructional team. My worry is that you are doing a rush to judgment by not funding the needed textbooks for the district at this time. Here's another example of a textbook that's used in this, used in this district, it has duct tape on it. If our students are presently using these books, depending on how long it takes to implement going all digital, they may be using them for another three or four years. There are no technology, technology resources in there. The textbooks and workbooks are out of date. As someone over there has said, that a large number of our students and some of our schools do not have access to these computers, so where are they going to get the equal access demanded by law if they don't have use of textbooks? We use them at the university level. Research indicates that it takes between three to five years to successfully implement new instructional strategies and pedagogical skills. These steps need to be done thoughtfully and over time. The team may be a good idea to look for in the future, but our present generation of teachers and students need new textbooks and instructional materials now. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Aida Ortiz, I'm a geometry teacher at Hoover High School, my, this is my third year. This semester is the first time I am able to focus on my delivery, procedures, and classroom management instead of having to write my own curriculum. According to NPR, San Diego Unified School District will have to hire close to 200 new math and science teachers by the year 2012. I'm here to share with you that I did not have adequate resources to teach algebra and geometry my first year when I started, and I'm really afraid that new teachers will be faced with the same frustrations that I did. Note that I've only discussed resources because resources include test generators to assess our students, worksheets so that our students can practice their skills, and in this new era of technology, homework tutors online provided by the new adoption. Yes, we'll receive new books, but we will more importantly receive new materials. These adoptions don't just provide the book, they also provide much-needed resources. If we want better performing schools, yes, we need good teachers, safe environments, and the ability to motivate our students, but first and foremost, we need reliable, rigorous curriculum. And I come to you with a petition signed by every teacher, including our student teachers at Hoover High School's math department, after they compared the possible new adoption to the book we are currently using. I beg you to please reconsider the adoptions for our high school. Our schools are in dire need of it. Thank you.
My name is Alan Spital, I am your one and only world language department for San Diego Unified School District. I'm here to talk today, I'm here to talk today because I'm being directed by the teachers who are on the adoption committee to do so, because they don't want to come en masse to take away the time that other people have to share with you. In the last 34 years, I've been in the school district 39 years in June, and the last 34 years, we have had four textbook adoptions in world languages first year, French, Spanish, German. 34 years, four textbooks. We're asking you to adopt a new textbook. The French textbook has a copyright date in 1998. The Spanish textbook has a copyright date of 2000. Those books have very minimal technology. Some of my, some of our students don't even recognize what a cassette player looks like. Yet that's what we're using in the classroom. The last textbook adoption in world language was in the year 2000. It's now 2009. As you've seen, the textbooks are looking very shoddy and very worn, you can imagine what textbooks are like 180 days in the hands of middle school students, every day. They don't last very long. These new textbooks that were selected by the, by your teachers, under your direction, I could list many advantages, but in world languages, there are three. The first advantage is that we selected textbooks, and I'm going to talk to teacher language here, we select, we selected textbooks that put function, that is, the use of language, before grammar, which is the technical part of language. But it wasn't easy to do because most textbooks don't, aren't written that way. The second thing we looked for was meaningful differentiated instruction, that is, dealing with the needs of students who have learning disabilities. The third thing was, we wanted textbooks that would allow us to bridge between print and online. That's therefore we have the book as well as the CD. Our goal this year with the book, we hoped, was to provide a reasonable, thoughtful access to online instruction. There is a saying in French that goes like this, l'avenir manque visage. It means, the future is invisible. Our future begins September 8th, when 8,500 faces, not invisibles, but faces, come into our classroom, into our world language classrooms, first-year language, expecting us to give them the best we have. We will give them the best we have, even though our materials are not the best we can give them. If I was a parent, I would be a bit shocked to know that second-largest district in the state of California cannot provide a fifth adoption in 34 years. Thank you.
My name is Deborah McNulty, my address is on file. I have been teaching for seven years, all of which I have had the opportunity to teach geometry. I was also the co-chair for the geometry textbook adoption committee. I understand that our country, our state, our city, and our district are in a budget crisis. I understand that you're in a horrible place trying to fix our district's budgets, possibly eliminating jobs, finding funding for buses, principals trying to run two schools, changing our awesome benefits, and maybe deciding not to adopt new textbooks. I wanted to speak today because although books are very expensive, I think it is vital for the students to experience a new textbook, particularly in geometry. The current textbook that is being used rarely has examples to display math concepts, it does not have a glossary, and I feel it is not the best choice for our current student population. As I mentioned, I was on the geometry textbook adoption committee, I was even selected to be a co-chairman. The committee, which was composed of geometry teachers that were approved by their administrator, spent hundreds of hours reviewing different textbooks. The textbook that was submitted, selected by the committee will be a better choice for our students. Although the content of geometry has not changed, the students that are learning have. Classrooms are full of different types of learners and students at many different levels of learning. Classrooms have students with special needs, students whose first language is not English, even students who not speak English, students who have never passed a high-school-level math class, and students who are in geometry for the first, second, third, or even fourth time. In order to graduate from high school, students need to take and pass geometry. The new textbook provides, supports in order to help students access the instructional materials. I truly believe that this textbook will help, will work for our students in order to be successful in their geometry class. It will help students, it will help support their algebra skills, it helps support struggling readers, it will help support students with visual processing skills, who have visual processing skills. It will help support students who are second-language learners, it will help prepare students for the KC, and it will provide challenges to the students who enjoy learning about mathematics. for the KC, and it will provide challenges to the students who enjoy learning about mathematics. The textbook comes with a CD of the text for every student. I understand some of you feel that textbooks are going to be outdated. Although I do agree that technology is the way of the future, it may be shocking, but not all students have access to computers. Not all classrooms have enough computers for all students. Also, not all people are able to learn by looking at a computer screen all day. Our school district, I believe, is not in a place where textbooks are no longer going to be available to students, and they only get a CD-ROM of the content. I foresee that eventually occurring, but not until every student has access to a computer, the internet, and teachers and staff are trained to troubleshoot all computer-related issues. There are several people who agree that the adoption of a new geometry text is necessary. I have a petition from six different high schools, representing 81 different teachers, administrators, and support staff. Please consider the adoption of the new geometry textbook. That will help support the needs of our current student population.
My name is Ray Adair. I'm the math and technology resource teacher at Lincoln High School. There's two critical points about the geometry adoption I'd like to address. One, our current textbook doesn't work well. It's not appropriate for our students, teachers often don't use it, it's just not functional. The proposed adoption is pedagogically sound, it's going to reach our students better, and it's more rigorous. It's a win-win. My other concern, though, is that technology's not going to be a panacea for some time. Someday, but we're not close to that yet. Textbooks are an appropriate technology. If we don't have this adoption, we've looked at the curriculum as teachers, we're coming up with a good way to teach it, but there's a lot of hidden costs in that. All that's going to be more work for teachers to do, teachers designing their own curriculum, running up printing costs, running a lot of other hidden costs. I don't think we'll save money by not adopting this text. We gave this text a good try, it just isn't working well. We really need a new one. Thank you.
Good evening, Superintendent Greer, President Jackson, and members of the Board of Trustees. I am David Mulvey, and I reside at 10314 Orozco Road, San Diego 92124, and my children attend school in our neighborhood. I wish to speak to you in support of the K-2 textbook adoption items. I think our students need to have the proper materials in their hands in order to achieve their fullest potential. I watched the board meeting last month on television, and there was a lot of other recommended materials on the list to be adopted. What happened to those recommendations? No Child Left Behind requires that our schools meet content standards and that teachers have high expectations for all children. Teachers need to have good instructional materials to meet these requirements. My son is an eighth grader, he's using a math book that is eight-years-old and which has no technology connected to it. I'm an engineer and have been able to help him with his algebra, but I wonder who is helping the other children with this difficult subject. Someone said last time that algebra hasn't changed over the years, but I think that students have changed and technology is now available to help students be introduced to mathematical concepts and to practice what they have learned differently. My son has struggled with Spanish class for the past two years. I have also noticed that the new Spanish textbooks are no longer on the table. His book, Copyright 2000, is not even correlated to the state world languages standards and is literally falling apart. Ms. Jackson, during your last state of the district address last month, you quoted Tom Paine and his reference to Sunshine Patriots during a low point in our history. I would ask you and your colleagues to consider his first, more famous piece of writing. It was called Common Sense. If you are all truly interested in holding high expectations for our students and really committed to leaving no child left behind, Common Sense suggests that my child and all the other students get up-to-date textbooks they need. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Katie Anderson. I have two students in the Point Loma feeder pattern, and I'm very involved with the GATE Department, which heads the AP issues. And I'm here to talk about the expansion of the AP programs and how that is at odds with this position to not fund books, because it's impossible to expand the AP program without books. AP is overseen by the College Board, and every AP course that is started has to be approved by the College Board, and they are going to require books. We had a conversation, or the board had a conversation a few months ago about AP and the discrepancy around the district between what's offered. And what we found then was that four schools had 16 or more courses offered, 11 had 10 or more, and that 12 had only between one and nine AP courses offered. So then the conversation was around how unfair that is, how inequitable, and how important it is to many of you to grow AP. If you don't fund textbooks, you're not going to be able to do that. The AP College Board has a goal that student participation and success in AP matches the demographics of the school district, and in order to achieve that goal, you need to increase Hispanic participation by 16%, African-American by 7%, and low-income student participation by 15%. You need books in order to do that, in order to open those sections, those startups. So please, open that up. The other thing is that the district's been awarded a $3 million AP incentive grant, and under that grant, which we wrote to get the money, we are obligated to add courses, which means books. So you have to do this, or you're not going to grow AP. And AP is open not just to GATE students, but to all students, and it's committed to offer a rigorous curriculum to all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, and I want to thank all of the public comment speakers that came up. And let me just start this conversation off by saying, the board's reference to the adoption was how it ties in with our technology. I think that it is very important, not that we just get books, that our students are prepared in technology. Now, I think the staff could have maybe showed us more how these books and technology are worked. I know that over the last week, I've seen some of the materials, and they do have a technology piece that goes in with our Permethium boards that we just put in recently. The board was not aware of that, and it is very important, especially in this day and time, that the staff is very, very clear about what it is that we're adopting, how it's going to help, and if it's traditional, then when are we looking at transition? We, you know, and I can't speak for the whole board right now, but what I can say is that we're not totally anti-textbook. What we're saying is that we need to make the best use of our funding, and that may be modifying the amount of textbooks that we buy, given for a per-given subject. And each subject may be a little bit different, but I think that our responsibility right now is not to do what we've traditionally done, and that is, when the textbook adoption comes, we just buy everything, then we're all happy, happy, happy. We are in an economic crisis right now, and we want to purchase smartly. So the staff has to present to us in a way that shows that they understand that we want to purchase things smartly for our students. We're not going to put ourselves in a position to be not under the Williams settlement. We're very much aware of that, but we are saying very, you know, intently that we do want to acknowledge what our students use each and every day, and that is technology. And we need to tie that in with the books that they are using. So with that, board members, are there any more comments before we vote? Yes?
Yeah.
Okay. Let me do Richard and Ms. Nakamura, and then Dr. Evans, and then Superintendent Greer.
Yeah, so I thank and appreciate the speakers and especially the teachers, you know, who've come up. I think what we probably all would agree is that the current textbooks that we have are not working, are inadequate, that the textbooks that you've looked at in the adoptions are better, and, you know, what I hear that you're saying is that, you know, for our needs today, the textbooks that you looked at in the adoptions would meet our needs today, but that we need to get to a point in the future where we're just better at using technology, and that includes making sure that all of our students have access to technology. And so I think that the question is really just about, you know, it's about timing and about strategy. So if we're trying to get from a point here today that's inadequate to a point in the future that's exciting, and that along the way, we need to take steps to make sure that the current needs of our students are met, I mean, I support that. I can support that, and I know that the staff has been working hard at this, and sometimes it's getting through our hard heads on the board, you know, that the staff has to deal with, and I appreciate that. So I think that, you know, I think the creation of this digital curriculum and instructional team is really important here, and I look forward to Darrell and Chuck, you know, your efforts in leading this up. One thing that I would say is, I would like to see students included in that team. I think that, I mean, you know, I appreciate, you know, all the comments, but with all due respect to the folks from university, it makes me a little bit nervous when you say that kids coming out of high-tech-high are having a problem readjusting to the use of textbooks. I think the push has to be on even folks at the university level to maybe move in the direction of listening to the kids at high-tech-high rather than forcing them back into, you know, your existing system, which is spending a lot of money every semester or every quarter on buying textbooks. So I think that, you know, so I can definitely support the resolution tonight, and I would welcome, you know, staff coming to us, you know, with, you know, to recommend further adoptions in the context of a strategy of how we get, you know, from, you know, the point that we're at now to a point where we want to be in the future, and that we're careful about the use of our resources. So we're not spending money today on things that are going to be outdated quickly when we could be spending that money on, for instance, you know, increasing access, you know, of all our kids to technology. But I can support, you know, certainly the resolution today, and I can support, you know, staff coming to us, you know, with recommendations of, you know, further adoptions, provided it's in the context of where we're trying to get in the future.
Yeah, when we had the vote last time, you know, I don't think there was a vote on this board, as upset as I have been sometimes, that bothered me more. I just went home and looked at the ceiling for, I think, until 2:00 in the morning. You know, I don't know, it's not related to the budget. I don't know why we're borrowing trouble. We've got plenty of trouble. We have more trouble than we possibly need, and the only reason to have made that decision willy-nilly up here on the board, it was, the decision just didn't, I'm sorry, but it just didn't make any sense. And I think that our teachers have come out in force to try, or not in force, they're so darn polite, you know, have sent representatives to us to tell us, you know, they, from the bottom in the classroom, have decided that these are the textbooks that we need, and from the bottom, burbling up through all of these endless, endless hours of committees and checking these textbooks, that this is what we need. And our students have told us, you know, our parents have told us, we need these textbooks and we need them now. And, you know, there was a automobile show recently, was it Detroit? And they had these really great cars. You can't get them. We're not ready for them yet. Wonderful features that we'd all love to have. We're not there yet. I think Mr. Barrera is right, it's a matter of strategy, it's a matter of, you know, figuring out how to do this, and I, you know, my husband teaches at a university, he podcasts his instruction, you know, he's got his own website. He's very modern, you know, he's very, very cutting-edge, but he's also in an industry, and is teaching in a curriculum that supports that, that it's appropriate for that. But that's also his decision. It wasn't the board of the CSU system coming down and telling him, "You will teach this way." You know, I think that, you know, history classes and French classes are different, and that we've had our teachers telling us this. So I really would like to have, you know, the curriculum folks come back to us, and that we spend this money on textbooks, because not spending this money isn't going to help us with the budget. It's got nothing to do with the budget, it's just a desire by this board to push forward, which is commendable, but as much as I really get irritated and frustrated with the pace and the amount of time we sometimes take with having a committee to form a task force to talk about an issue that, you know, can go on and on and on sometimes, this is one issue where I think we're prepared and we're ready to move quickly, just not this quickly. And we shouldn't give up our students' education, the students that are here in our classes right now for, not a pipe dream, but, you know, a dream of what we want. And I just am, I've been very frustrated with this, and I'd like to see it back on the agenda as soon as possible so that these teachers can have the comfort and the knowledge of knowing that they've got the textbooks and the materials that they need to teach this class. Obviously, I'm voting for this today, I'm only disappointed that we don't have the whole thing back, because our teachers are waiting and they don't get it. So.
Dr. Evans.
Well, I also support this agenda item and also further investigation in terms of some of the other textbook adoptions, but I do disagree with Mrs. Nakamura on the approach. I think you are seeing democracy in action, where we are carefully and contemplatively making these decisions. I think it's commendable that this board is not making willy-nilly decisions and just automatically to decide to spend money. We could have very easily, last time, at the last meeting, had the textbook presentation and said, "Okay, you people came up with this, we're going to approve it." But we said, "No, we want to check into this further to make sure what we can do in the midst of a budget crisis." One of the issues that we talked about was flexibility. We wanted to investigate what was the maximum amount of flexibility we could have with funds, even if they were designated as textbook funds. And just to use an example, it's always compared to what? If we see an old, tattered textbook, that is not good. If we're making a decision, for example, between an old, tattered textbook and having a high school class twice as large because we've laid off a teacher, then that textbook, that tattered textbook takes on a little different meaning. So again, this came back to the issue, which we wanted to investigate further, about the flexibility. Now, I know we were told very clearly, no, there is no flexibility, but again, with the state putting us in the situation that they did, I think we have to look very carefully at what we can do in terms of flexibility. Now, I agree that there is a transition period here, that we can't automatically switch over to technology. And I know that the superintendent certainly went out and did what we asked, which was to say what is absolutely essential, and that was in terms of these consumable things, the issue that we wanted to move towards technology, and the idea of forming this team. And the other question is/was and still is, what about the other textbooks in terms of us understanding what is the impact? Because every time we're making a budget decision, we want to understand what the impact is. Are we buying a text that is just new, that we bought a few years ago, and it's not much different, and they're not in that bad of shape? Is it because we're out of books? Is it because the material is out of date? You know, a case-by-case analysis of all of this. And then the other question I have, and I don't have the answer to this either, is in terms of, do we necessarily have to adopt a textbook at one point district-wide? Maybe we do, but on the other hand, if there are particular schools or particular teachers that are wanting particular texts, can we accommodate them if others are satisfied with the ones they are using? So I think this whole process that we are doing is looking very, very carefully at how we're spending our money. I think that everybody up here agrees that we should have all the texts that we need available for next school year, and we're just going to make this decision very carefully. So I support that decision, but the agenda item, but I very much want to have a very thorough report on the whole issue of all the textbooks being proposed, what happens if we buy them, what happens if we don't, what are the effects, what are the impacts, so we can make a very intelligent decision.
Dr. Greer and Mr. DeBeg.
I'll let Mr. DeBeg go first, I know. Okay. Well, I was a teacher in the district, it made people know, and I have to say that even in the best of times, we had cycles of adoptions that ranged as long as seven or eight years, so that there was a plan to just keep going through the curriculum, and your turn would come up, you'd gear up for getting a better book, and hope you made a decision that would carry you through, and the textbook publishers would support you with appropriate for that time, either workbooks or whatever. And I'm not too sure that workbooks are the current way to teach, but nevertheless, we'll leave that to the people that are doing the work. But we also had during that same period of time, a bus replacement plan. And the idea was that, you know, because buses wear out and because they're a safety issue, that we would replace the buses periodically so that we wouldn't have dangerous situations for the kids. Somehow, in the last bunch- for the kids. Somehow in the last bunch of budget crises, we've already done away with the bus safety issue and we're not buying new buses and having for quite a while. So, to say that we got to do the same thing we've always been doing because it's something that's critical is to say that we're not facing a crunch. Now, you know, I think that while I argue with this board a lot, that I have to say that this was a decision that came about as a result of the state giving us flexibility on the approximately 20 million bucks we get every year for textbook support. And the state said, "Okay, guys, tell me if I'm wrong, that you have flexibility within the use of the textbook money that we send out because we currently have a fiscal crisis." So, we may have not thought of that flexibility until it actually was one of those that was represented to us as a chance to review what we're doing in context with, you know, what looks to me like more like a $200 million crunch than some people are saying it's $100 million. Well, we could argue how big that is, but the point is, I think we intelligently looked at whether textbook flexibility was something that might get us through part of this crisis. And yeah, we have to put it against program cuts. We have to put it against everything from health benefits to layoffs. And so, I'm not going to criticize the fact that we pushed back on just automatically saying, "Yeah, let's do it." But I do agree with the community people and the people that are representing the need for textbook, that yeah, it's hurting. It's hurting instruction. It's hurting kids. Everything we do up here is hurting kids. It's a balance and the issue is we got to decide. And maybe the community's got to decide that either they don't trust us or they do trust us, or that sooner or later, somebody's going to have to bite the bullet and make some decisions that are not happy-making. And I think that's what we've done. We basically pushed back a little in saying, "Well, we want to talk more about online. We want to talk more about using books." I have to say it. I've never seen in this district a recommendation come from staff to upgrade the current inventory of the last adoption, which would be a huge benefit in terms of dollars. Now, let's just imagine, I'm not going to argue about what's going to happen because I'm going to go for this. It's already voted for as far as I'm concerned. But if you really want to think about it, if these, these folks want new books and we don't have the money, maybe adequacy would mean that we would replace the lost books, the destroyed books with books with people who think they can afford those, that have made a new adoption and we get them for 10 cents on the dollar. You know, when you buy an old obsolete book from the publisher, he gets full bucks. He'll charge you, you know, 50 bucks for a chemistry book without batting an eye, even if it's the last adoption. But you can buy that same chemistry book from an, from an early adopter for a buck because they're going to throw them in the trash. So, then there are some savings around this, but I have never seen those kind of recommendations coming down. Let's defer because we have other issues or because we're going to try to make a transition to a more high-level technology. Let's try and, I haven't seen that kind of imagination. And I'd like to see, you know, it's either take it or leave it. That's the kind of imagination I get. Well, we're past, we're past that. We're in a real tough time. We need to start biting the bullet and looking hard, hardly at the things we do. And some of them might be counterintuitive for staff right now, but that doesn't mean it's not a good idea. Because people have told me about this, this adoption thing. It wasn't my idea to say, "Buy old books from other school districts," but by God, you could buy them cheap, especially if they just adopted the ones we didn't adopt. They're going to throw them in the trash. They're probably glad to get the buck for them. They used to sell for 40 bucks. And the content, sorry, is the same, but the CDs aren't.
Okay. Dr. Greer?
Thank you. Please know that I, as a school superintendent, have a personal belief about this, that our kids today learn differently than we did. They're in a different world. They're, they're learning through internet. They're learning through mediums that we didn't have when I came along. I believe personally that in the future, the real wave of instructing kids is through web-based material where teachers become frankly, I don't want to be too cliche, but guides on the side versus being sages on the stage. And I really believe that. I think the real question is the transition period between getting from where we are today to where I know I would like to be and where I believe the majority, if not all of this board wants to be. That's the big question. I do think the formation of a digital curriculum and instructional team is the right way to go. We would have put children on it or students on it. I like that idea, but we would have, we would have done that because you have to. In the meantime, however, we are where we are. And I want to be real clear again that this, these recommendations are not coming from Chuck Morris or from me or people downtown. These decisions and recommendations came from the bottom up. And I would say to you, maybe sometimes we are not as clear communicating as we were, but when we presented this last time, we clearly told you that these books had CDs. We held CDs up. We told everyone that this was a bridge. And at the same time, having said that, I understand the financial crisis that we're in. And every year you come and we have $20 million thereabouts that we spend on textbook adoptions. And so, I understand the hard place and the concern that I have and I want everyone to know. We can go back and look at this again. But you've had here tonight petitions presented to you with, with all the math teachers in, in the entire district that have signed. The teachers have said, "These are the materials we want." So, the point I'm trying to make to the board is if you want us to go back and look again, I need some further directions from you in terms of what it is that you want us to consider. Now, I've talked to Daryl about whether or not we could get a disc from a textbook that if we were to buy the book and could put the book on the web where it would become web-based and everyone would have access to it. The problem with that is they won't let you do it.
Superintendent Greer, I mean, it could cut you off and I do want to comment and I want us to try to move on. The CD part was one of the things that came up. And the CDs that are in some of these books aren't the traditional CDs that we think of. And that was one of our comments was that they, it was a CD with the book on it.
Oh, I see.
But some of these are actually interactive CDs.
Right.
And I think that's the part that the board was not aware of. Like, we're not saying, we don't want to, yeah, it's one thing to put the CD on a book and the kids can look at the CD and it's the same book.
Right.
The question is that we have enough technology now that they're given CDs that are interactive with their book.
Right.
And, and that is a different thing that came to me. I can't speak about the rest of the board, but, but it wasn't the fact that you just, because you said we have a CD. And I'm like, when I was in the classroom, they had a CD with the book. And it was just the book on CD. But we have transitioned and we have smart boards. And if we're going to bridge this transition gap, I think what the staff needs to do is show us how the adoption of this text is bridging that gap.
You can do that.
And I do believe that some of the books actually do that, but the board did not know that because the way it was presented was it's a book and it's a CD. And the CD meant to us, it was just a book in print form on a CD. And it is a lot different. And I think that that point has to be, be, be made because we are in that transition piece. So, I think that when you want clearer direction, the direction is this. We want our students to have the best that we can afford during this crisis time. But we also know that we're moving, we're in a digital age. Most of our students function in a digital age. So, we want textbooks that are going to bridge the gap from the traditional hardback textbook to that digital aid and be able to provide what we need for various student populations. The other thing that came up is exactly that. Do we need to have the entire adoption? Or is it something that where we just, as Mr. DeBeck said, we can just build on what we have? And so, it becomes not just saying, "We're going to buy 135,000 books," but do we only just need to buy, you know, 30,000 to fill in the gaps until we get to where we want to go? And I think that's what we're trying to say. We can, if I can be so bluntly to say for, for the rest of the board members. Okay. Any more board discussion? If not, let's, let's vote. That passes 5-0. We now move to item GO2. Item GO2 is intra... Thank you. Item, item GO2 is intra-divisional curriculum committee for instructional matters. Dr. Greer, and this is an action item.
Thank you, President Jackson.
If you could exit very quietly so we can continue with the meeting. I appreciate that. We would appreciate that. Okay.
Thank you, President Jackson. This item is a return item to the board seeking approval of requests to pilot courses. These requests, again, came from committees and teachers in our schools. We've gone back and reviewed these courses. They're here for your consideration this evening. These courses, there are clear correlations to state academic standards. There's an evaluation plan included to judge the pilot courses at the end of the year. And we also have made sure these courses fulfill the A to G requirements. No approval.
We have a question and a second. We have board comments and then we have one speaker. Any board comments? No, we have one speaker. Burton Grant, would you please come forth and speak, please?
Hello. My name is Burton Grant. I'm a music teacher with the district since '98. I'm also a parent. I have students at the San Diego Cooperative Charter School. And I'm here today because the VAPA department is on the Plan B chopping block. Music curriculum makes students smarter. And here's how. With music, everything happens on the clock. Every note, every rest happens within a specific timeframe. Multiple brain calculations all have to happen simultaneously. What note is that? How do I play it on my instrument? How long do I play it? Don't play too fast, too slow, too loud, too soft. Watch the conductor. Students need to take decisive action all while preparing for the next thing that's on the page. The multitasking required to play even a simple song requires intense mental calisthenics. On stage, students have their feet held to the fire. They have to slay the dragon of fear, focus and make it all happen while everyone's watching and listening. There's accountability. The multitasking and concentration required to be a successful musician strengthens higher cognitive function, makes thinking more efficient and has a positive effect on all areas of a person's life, not just music making. And every year of study increases that benefit exponentially. If you want to raise test scores and reduce dropouts, expand the music curriculum. And it will happen. It's not a theory. It's not a pet project. It's a fact. Superintendent Greer, I heard you on the radio a couple, three weeks ago talking about dropouts. And I, you were spot on. You said some kids, they drop out because school's not challenging enough. And I was pointing at my radio saying, "Yes, that's absolutely true," but it's not true for band students. Those kids are not bored. Those kids aren't bored with school. Those kids want to win trophies for their schools. Kids who think in their sophomore year, they have a chance to be section leader their senior year are not going to drop out. Kids who know they need to keep their grades up to stay in drum line are motivated to do so. During this budget crisis, it's imperative that we do not reduce the music curriculum. Once a program gets cut, it's very difficult to restore. When the pendulum starts swinging the other way, I look forward to working with you on the difficult work of restoring music curriculum at all of the schools where it's already been reduced and eliminated. Thank you very much.
Welcome. Any more board comments? If not, please vote. Okay. That passes 5-0. The next item up is item GO3, which is to propose action regarding magnet transportation and program removed and seconded. We have about 20 speakers on this item. And the most time that we can spend on this item is 20 minutes for public comment. So, that means each speaker gets about a minute. I'm going to call you all up. You want to do one round? You have comments first?
Yeah, what I was going to say is I think maybe that before they come to speak that and know what we're moving.
Okay. Improving.
Improving. And then if they say they agree, they could just do it.
Okay.
Instead of talking their whole story, which I'm sure we've heard part of.
Okay. Dr. Greer, could you give us what we're going to be proving?
So, let's outline what we moved and seconded.
He's gonna, he's gonna give it to us.
Thank you, President Jackson. We're recommending that the board agree that we allocate supplies and materials to the schools that are formula-based on theme and enrollment. $75 per student for communications, language programs, microsociety, physical education. $100 per student for science, technology, engineering and mathematics schools. $150 per student for visual and performing arts elementary and middle schools. $175 per student for global citizenship, international baccalaureate, science, technology, engineering, mathematic, secondary schools, visual and performing arts, high schools. Furthermore, we're recommending that you, the board, approve the allocation of a .5 magnet coordinator to each school and that you agree that we can allocate necessary teaching positions to support individual school magnet programs. We are recommending that no principal sharing arrangement at magnet schools in this proposal and that you restore magnet school transportation.
Okay. Board member comments really quickly? I know, maybe really quick, but you need to. Go ahead.
Well, you want to start? Well, basically, I've moved it and I also support it. And I understand it answers a lot of concerns in the community. And so, you know, I'm not going to dwell on that. There are things in there that are trade-offs, but the idea that we're taking care of the shared principal part and also the transportation is enough for me to say I'll vote positively for it.
Mr. Barrera, please.
Yeah, I want to support this as well. However, I'd like to make one amendment, which is that there's no principal sharing, period. Not just restricting the principal sharing to magnet schools.
I'll second that.
Okay. Ms. Nakamura, any comment?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to leave. So, if any of you come down and speak, I just want you to know my vote is right there already. So, I'm, you know, obviously support it. I have supported it from the beginning. So, I have to go and, sure.
Okay. Dr. Evans?
Go quietly, please.
I do support the restoration of the magnet transportation. We're doing this, we have a lot of items that we have to look at for our budget over the next couple of months, but we realized that this was one that was very time-sensitive in terms of parents making decisions about where their, their children are going to be. So, that's why it's very important. And one of the things that came up in terms of this was the issue of the magnet schools and their special programs in terms of the not-good situation of trying to share principals. And so, as coming out of that, I also support the idea that none of the schools that were listed on Plan A, because we're not going to separate out the magnets on the principal sharing thing, that none of the schools on Plan A adopt the principal sharing program.
Okay. So, I will call up the name for those who may want to speak. If you still want to speak, please feel free to come up and you will have about a minute. Monique Clifford, Normo Sandoval Ordinez, Lee Halvin, Andreas Esquero, Banca Matali, Jane Pearl, Elizabeth Bills, Jessica Nils, Malaysia Nils, Geronimo Salas, Olivia Finelli, Richard Scott, Latitia Mangunier. Not right, but it's close. Okay. Yeah, Mangunier. Yeah, she's going to beat me when she sees me again. Alberto Castello, Ethel Larkin, Sarah Keller, Amishna Walker, Pastor Rodney Corley, Terry Angel, I think it is, probably E in there, Timothy Payne Jr., Galen Davis, and I think it's Malicia and, Malicia and Mrs. Neal? Like, two people, maybe? Okay. Okay. Thank you. Please go.
Okay. Hello? Wow, I'm shocked. We have five, six teacher, two parents and three students who are actually going to present in their target languages. But for the sake of the timing and we're just floored, we have to say, "Thank you. Gracias, merci." And hopefully you can visit our school to see our excellence instead of having to talk about the survival of our magnet school. And we're not the only immersion school in San Diego. So, thank you. You made the right decision.
Thank you.
Language Academy, total French immersion program and dual Spanish immersion program. Hopefully, we'll all try to learn more about our programs. Thank you.
Somebody please speak. Oh, just wait.
You can all just shout gracias.
Yeah, y'all can just say it all in one.
We just want to say that you have our written statements for Language Academy.
Thank you very much.
Good, good, sir.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Andres Esquero. Soy estudiante de cuarto grado en el programa de español en Language Academy. Mi lenguaje secundario es español. Yo soy bilingüe. A mí me gusta poder hablar dos lenguajes. Yo tomo el autobús a la escuela. Mis padres trabajan. Cuando mi hermano y yo tomamos el autobús, ayudo a mis padres. A mí me gusta poder hablar dos lenguajes. Yo tomo el autobús a la escuela. Mis padres trabajan. Cuando mi hermano y yo tomamos el autobús, ayudo a mis padres llegar a tiempo a sus trabajos. Si no puedo ir en el autobús, va a ser muy difícil para que mis padres terminen su trabajo. Estoy seguro que muchas otras familias van a tener este problema. Es muy importante obtener transporte para que podamos continuar nuestra educación en la escuela de Language Academy. Me gusta mi escuela, mis maestras, y mis amigos allí. Yo quiero continuar aprendiendo dos lenguajes. Siendo bilingüe y multicultural va a ayudarme con muchas cosas de mi vida. Por favor, voten para mantener el transporte en las escuelas magnet. Gracias.
Bonjour, je m'appelle Lea Levine, et je suis en sixième année au Language Academy dans le programme de français. Vous avez déjà une copie de ce que je vous ai écrit, et je voudrais juste dire merci pour avoir restauré la transportation au Language Academy. Merci.
All right. Thank you. It's a bridge after the high school.
Bonjour, je m'appelle Bianca Mathioli. Je suis dans la sixième année à l'Académie des Langues, et je seulement veux dire merci pour sauver notre transportation à l'Académie des Langues.
Bonsoir. I'm Elizabeth Bills. I'm a French immersion kindergarten teacher at the Language Academy. And behalf of all of my students who would be able to tell you in French, merci beaucoup.
Hi, I'm Janine Perle. I just want to thank you so much for restoring the magnet transportation. My daughter's a third grader. My son will start in kindergarten, and she is actually a second generation. I started in 1978 in the immersion program, went all the way through, and I'm fully bilingual. So thank you so much for providing this opportunity for my children.
Any more?
Hi. My name is Terri Ong, and I teach at Valencia Park Center for Academics, Drama, and Dance. I had written this lovely little speech, but I can see that some of it is not going to, oh, I'm not part of them, I'm a different.
Are you fine? Go ahead.
Okay. I'm yellow. And I'm going to change what I'm going to say just a little bit. I did want to say that I have already written my representatives about the TEEG money. Superintendent Greer wrote a wonderful letter to our state legislator, which gave me immense information, which I've shared with our parents at my school, and have encouraged them to continue to write and support that, because we are getting ripped in the TEEG department. And we, people need to look at that and write to the administration up at that level and complain, because it's not fair what we're getting. So I was really pleased that you had done that, Superintendent. Our magnet schools are important. I'm looking at this and like, wow, yay, busing's back. That's a good thing. And that's really happy. But I'm looking at the budget cuts. We were given a budget, and we approved it. We're a year-round school, and before we went on break, we approved it. And now it's different. And so, I'm looking at this kind of going, yay, but what is this going to mean for our magnet? And we're concerned about that. And being on break, we didn't even know any of this was, you know, how much was going on. So I'm going to just implore to you that you remember that the magnet budgets help keep what's there there and help it to grow and become a better, stronger magnet. Magnet programs keep kids in schools. They help students who have different needs and different ways of learning, which you've talked about earlier with the textbooks. Our district competes with so many other educational choices, such as charter schools and homeschooling. The people send these children, their children, to these schools because they need programs that give their child a unique educational experience that supports their learning style.
Okay, we want you to condense your comments, not just, just condense them, please.
I'm sorry.
We want you to condense your comments.
I, yeah.
Okay, very good.
I'm sorry. All right. And that magnet schools do the same thing. We provide transportation, which is the selling point. So make sure that you, San Diego Unified District is known for quality education and unique programs that engage our students through choice.
I'm also concerned, can you hear me? I'm Galen Davis. I'm a dance teacher at Valencia Park. And I'm also concerned about what the change in budget means for the instructors that are at our program that have kept it at this high level, what's going to happen to that. Through the arts, we make a deeper connection to others than ourselves. Through the arts, we express the value and beauty in really important things in life, the things that money can't buy. It is not frivolous frill. It is truly that which we are made of, an essential part of the human experience. That is why it encourages, motivates, inspires, and cultivates students into valuable, unique, active members of our society. At Valencia Park, we have witnessed students shed tears of joy and pride upon the completion of their first dance performance. We have had teachers and parents express gratitude for the opportunity the children have had and the behavioral and academic improvement that they have seen as a result of their involvement in the arts. And I would like to share with you a paper that says the different benefits, social, physical, academic, that dance provides for the students.
Ethel Larkin, president of OSS, Chapter 724. We'd just like to say thank you for restoring the magnet busing program. Also, if you weren't aware, this past weekend, our drivers participated in the rodeo. We did you proud. It was, it was, we brought in several first-place trophies throughout the state. Thank you for bringing our buses back, and thanks to our drivers. It's always been proven that we are very safe, and that's part of what the rodeo team does. It's about the safety of our children.
Yes, my name is Reverend Rodney L. Corley Sr. from the 47th Street Church of God here in San Diego by the 47th Street Charlie Station. And I just want to thank you for reversing the decision to keep the transportation for the magnet school. I lived in the city of San Diego all my life, and also the learning that has taken place from this and the diversity that's taken place is very needed in our community, not only in our community, but what a great opportunity we have for children to diverse in other areas. Because I remember when I first started out in architecture and engineering, I have always been one of the only African-Americans in that field. And to be able to identify with other people and to work together with other people has been a great access for me, to be able to be in that type of environment. So I just want to thank you again for not counseling out this transportation for our magnet school. And I thank you so very much.
Hello. We prepared a speech to keep the magnet program and the busing, so we just wanted to say thank you for keeping the program and revising, you know, everything.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Malaysia, and I just wanted to say thank you for changing it and keeping the busing, because lots of people ride the bus that come to my school, and I would want to keep those friends and people that come to our school.
Hi, good evening. I'll keep it short and sweet. I just wanted to let you know that I am a product of the magnet program. I'm an alumni of Valencia Park Elementary as well as San Diego School of Creative Performing Arts. At 29, I hold an executive position, and I don't believe that I would be in my place today without the magnet program. I had other family members attend as well. And I also made the decision to move into the neighborhood so that my son could attend Valencia Park Elementary. And he could tell you that without the magnet program, he would not be willing to put his best foot forward. He knows that to perform in the productions that they have at the school, that he has to do well in all of his subjects to make that happen. And if you haven't attended a production at the school, I highly encourage you. I've sent emails, and I thank you, Mr. Beck, for your response.
Okay, thank you very much. Board member comments? Ms. Barrera?
Yeah, just, my one quick comment is, it's, we appreciate, you know, you coming up and saying thanks, and we especially appreciate you coming. But before you walk out the door, we need you to stay with us. We've got a long way to go in this budget crisis. The meeting that we're having Thursday night at Kearney High School, again, at 7:00, is very important, because we've got to, we've got to do our best to let our state legislators know that we can't let this budget crisis get worse, you know, with the, with the next round of potential, you know, cuts at the state. So, you know, as Dr. Evans said at the beginning of the meeting, you know, we're glad that we could figure a way to do this, to restore the busing to the magnet schools and to, and to eliminate the idea of principal sharing. But we've got so much further to go in this budget crisis. And what we can't have is, when your issue gets resolved, for you to walk away from the table, we need you to stay with us and fight this all the way through. So please stick with us.
Dr. Evans?
Well, I certainly, excuse me, agree with what Mr. Barrera said. And I think one of the things you have to realize is we did, excuse me, move this ahead on our schedule of budgets because of the crucial nature of the timing, but that there are many other painful issues that we're facing. We all need to stick in this together. And I also want to really, a lot of people from the magnet programs came up with ideas about cost-saving measures. And we still do need to look at cost-saving, even though we are keeping the transportation. So this may mean some consolidation of routes. This can potentially affect things such as schedules and bus times and so forth, because we have to do this in the most efficient way we can, so that we save some money. So it has been our intention to save the programs, to reinstate the transportation, but we still do need to save some money on some of these things. So we need to stay involved in this, and as Ms. Barrera was just saying, don't go away. This is, this is the worst thing that can happen, any of these budget items, for someone to say, okay, I got what I wanted, I'm walking out. We need to stay involved, because we, the state is never very far away with the acts, and we need to be prepared, and we need to be united in dealing with this. So thank you.
Dr. Greer?
Thank you, Board President Jackson. I also wanted the board members to know that administratively, it's our intent to open the magnet application process for two weeks because of the uncertainty that was swirling around whether we would or would not provide transportation. We think that would be fair to parents who had thought about other educational opportunities for their children. So I wanted to make you aware of that.
Very well. Please vote. Board members? That pass is five zero. The next item is a first reading item. It's a resolution for adopting UCA to G course, course sequence as part of our high school graduation requirements. Mr. Barrera, Dr. Greer, both of you. Dr. Greer?
Dr. Greer.
Thank you, President Jackson. For some time now, we have been looking as an organization about trying to increase rigor in our high schools. We have been working with our Latina Advisory Committee. I see Dr. Achoa is here, and I want to recognize him and thank him for his leadership. They have been encouraging the organization to move towards an A to G curriculum as a default curriculum for all of our students. And Mr. Barrera has been working with us on this issue, and we have a resolution that is pretty much self-explanatory. But I would like to, at the appropriate time, if now's the appropriate time, I'll do it. I'd like to highlight for the board and for the community the difference between our current requirements in the San Diego Unified School District, the ed code requirements for the State of California, and the differences between those and the University of California admission requirements. Because when we talk about having an A to G curriculum as a default curriculum, that means that students that graduate from our school district that have completed this curriculum in a successful manner would automatically be eligible to meet the entrance requirement to the University of California system. So if I might, I'd like to just start and talk about the core courses, and then I'll answer questions that board members might have. The first is history and social science. We currently, as a school district, require six semester credits or three years. The ed code requirement also requires three courses. However, the University of California admission requirement is only for two courses. So if we were to adopt the University of California admission requirements as our graduation requirements, we would be requiring one less unit of social studies or social sciences. English, our school district requires eight semester credits or four years of high school English. The ed code requirement, and this will be surprising to many people, the California education requirement only requires three units of English for high school graduation. The University of California system, the A to G requirements would be four years. So you can see we are aligned with the UC system in that regard. Mathematics, we're requiring six units, six semester credits or three years. The ed code requirement only requires two years of math. The UC requirement is three years, four recommended, of college preparatory mathematics, which is usually Algebra I, Algebra II, and geometry. You can see in mathematics, we are also aligned with the UC minimum requirements. In laboratory sciences, we require six semesters or three years to graduate. The ed code requirement is two years. The University of California admission requirements, or the A to G curriculum, again, is two years, even though they require three. So you can see that we surpassed the ed code and the UC minimum requirements. So again, if we adopted this, we would be requiring two units of laboratory science to graduate. Of course, as I've pointed out to staff, if students wanted to take the third unit or the fourth unit, that would be certainly something that they would have the option of doing. The next area is language other than English. This is important. Our requirement, we have two different options. One is Option A, of the world language and visual performing and practicing art requirements. We have given the students the opportunity to take two semesters of a world language plus one semester of visual performing or practical arts. So it's like a year and a half. Or in Option B, we've given them the option of taking two semesters of visual and performing arts and one semester of practical arts. The ed code requirements, they require one course in visual or performing arts, and they give us the, they give us the option of having that visual or performing arts or a foreign language. That's the ed code. So you can do one or the other. The University of California requirement, they require two years of the same language. They recommend three, but they require two. So basically, you can see that right now, we do not require a student to study a foreign language even for a semester or a year. So adopting this requirement, this new A to G curriculum would require all of our students to take and complete two courses, two years, or four semesters of a foreign language with a third recommended. Also, under visual and performing arts, you've heard me talk about the state, about the district giving kids the option. The ed code requirement, again, one course in visual or performing arts. The University of California, one year of a single-year-long approved art course. And that could come from any of our VPA disciplines, such as dance, drama, theater, music, or visual arts. Again, the key is, it's the same course for an entire year. You wouldn't take a semester of vocal music and a semester of drama. It's a year of the same art, two semesters of the same arts course. Under physical education, we are requiring two units of physical education. The ed code requirement is two years of physical education, unless the pupil has been exempted pursuant to the provisions of the code. The University of California admission requirements are none. However, we would have to continue offering two years of physical education to be in compliance with the ed code. The point I'm trying to make here is that even if we move towards the A to G UC requirements, we cannot ignore the ed code. So we have to blend those two together. So if you look at computer literacy, for example, we give students three ways to demonstrate computer literacy. They can either take a computer education course, they can complete an approved course incorporating computer education as a component of that course, or bypassing a computer proficiency test. test. The state does not require that provision to be met, nor does the UC California. So, again, we would not be requiring that because we have to make room in what we are requiring to meet both the ed code requirements and the University of California requirements. Other differences, our school district now requires a weighted grade point average of 2.0 or higher in grades nine through 12 to graduate. The State of California ed code, there is no GPA recommendation. Now, the University of California, the A to G requirement is a minimum of a 3.0 weighted grade point average calculated in grades earned in A to G courses in grades 10 and 11. And all A to G courses must be passed with a C average or higher. So, if you take an A to G course and you don't pass it with a C, you make a D, you don't get credit for that course. So, you have to go back and do course credit recovery to do that. So, you can see that the UC requirement is at least a whole grade point higher than what we are currently requiring. And in addition to that, students must have a 2.0 or a C average in each individual course. The senior exhibition, that is a requirement for graduation for us. It is not a requirement for the UC system or the A to G curriculum. Casey, we require students to pass both the English and mathematics portion of the Casey exam. The ed code requires that each pupil completing grade 12 shall successfully pass that Casey. So, our requirements and the state requirements are the same. The UC system does not require that, so we would have to comply with the state requirement. Electives, we are currently, as a school district, giving the students an opportunity to take 11 semesters of elective course credit. State doesn't require any. The UC system requires one year of electives and it gives you courses to select from. They must be A to G approved. So, what this, adopting this would mean that all of our vocational courses would have to be aligned and certified to meet A to G requirements as well as any of our online courses that we are offering. Now, the resolution that we have in front of you for a first reading also talks about giving our students the opportunity to either take A to G courses that are recommended or can take college courses for dual high school college credit, much as we do at the Met or in some of our fast-forward courses. What we also would come back to you at a later time to recommend is that if we're going to adopt this A to G curriculum, I think that we ought to take a look at the number of credits that we're requiring our students to complete for high school graduation credit. This is much more rigorous. So, we have given thought as a staff, and wanted to talk to you about this. We don't have a recommendation for you tonight, but we currently require 44 units of credit for graduation. We have thought about requiring 40 units of graduation because that will give students more electives if they want to take those electives, but they would be able to meet the 40 units of graduation requirement with a 3.0 GPA and a grade C in those two courses, in all of those courses. I just want you to think about that and we'll get feedback from others, but we're trying to be reasonable in balancing the requirements because this is much more rigorous. The other question that we, questions, there's many questions about this, that if we moved to this curriculum for all students and a student were to enter or finish their senior year, for example, in that senior year, they had taken all of these courses, but they have a 2.95 grade point average. Or they've taken geometry three times or four times and they just make a high D, but they don't make a C in it. Does that mean that student does not receive a diploma from the San Diego Unified School District? That's a question that we need to have discussions about. Some of our other institutions in the state that have adopted an A to G curriculum, they will say on the surface that they're A to G certified, but when you start looking and digging deeper into what they're doing, quite frankly, they're giving parents and students opportunities to opt out in the 11th grade or at the beginning of the 12th grade and they will offer a diploma that is a high school diploma from that particular school district, but it does not meet the requirements of A to G as we are presenting to you here this evening. So, this is a first reading. There's a lot to think about. The thing I like about the resolution is, again, we are looking at putting together a study group that can be advisory to the staff and therefore to the board because I believe in strong high school rigor, but I also know that if we're going to have this kind of rigor in our high schools, things have to change and change in a hurry at our middle schools to prepare these students. They have to change in a hurry at our, for example, at our elementary schools. I've asked staff, for example, today to pull data, to share with me about the number of our middle school students, our middle school teachers in this district that teach middle school science, that teach middle school mathematics, that actually have majors or minors in those courses. It's dreadfully low, to the point that I will come back to a proposal with you. We would love to talk about this with our teachers' union about offering master's degrees in math or in science for our middle school math and science teachers that we can pay for out of Title II funds or possible stimulus dollars. We have to have teachers, particularly in our middle schools, that are certified, that have, not only certified, but have degrees in the courses that they are teaching if we are going to adequately prepare our students to take on this kind of rigor at our high schools. So, this is kind of a quick overview of the comparisons between what we currently offer, what ed code requires us to offer, and what would be the requirements of an A to G, University of California-certified diploma.
Mr. DeBeck, please.
Sure. Well, I have a lot of reservations about a resolution that says adopting University of California A to G courses as a default without knowing all the ramifications of all the things we've already heard. I know it's the first reading, but what I'm going to say is that, you know, part of the report that you'd expect, well, let me just, maybe I'll ask that these kind of things be answered. First of all, the question would be, we've talked about the need for increasing our graduation by our children. And it's my experience in any situation that the more you add to the requirements, the less likely you are to get the kids to meet them all. In other words, what are the odds if we adopted this today, which I personally don't think we should adopt until we know all the ramifications, but even if we adopted it in a second reading and we don't know the ramifications, we may still be in trouble. A good example would be, what do we do about our multiple pathway plan that we've got planning and working on around the whole idea of vocational education? In other words, are all the vocational education courses, including now at High Tech High or at our Construction Tech, all of them going to ever meet that requirement? Well, you could say you're going to apply for that, but let's say you apply for them and then you're turned down. I happen to have had to done this in another district and I happen to have gotten, for example, A to G okay for an agricultural class, but it changed the entire focus of the agricultural class that was what the farmers in that community expected to happen and the kids didn't get any hands-on with tractors, they didn't get some of the skills that they needed to do the plowing. They had to give up the curriculum to emphasize the science of agriculture because the only way to get the credit was to give up content in order to do that. So, you know, I know this is coming down like a civil right, you know? But the effect may be contrary to what those people that are advocating are going to get. For example, let's say you took all the A to G classes and didn't get the GPA you need, then do you not graduate? If you do, it's going to be a civil rights act. You're going to have a lot of people that don't meet it and then you're going to come back and say, "Why didn't you get them there?" Well, their resources may be to part of them. You know, I'd love to have the kind of support for every kid, but the records show, our current records show that we do support social promotion, that we do have kids in our high schools that are in the lower quartile and some of them are far below basic. Now, I don't mind saying, "Let's raise the standards," but the consequence of raising standards needs to be part of what we discuss. And you know what? Maybe we ought to start, you know, looking down the road and saying, "Okay, are we going to allow kids to fail algebra in the eighth grade and proceed on to geometry? Or are we going to do something really different?" What we've been doing so far is just letting them go forward and hoping they'll catch up. Well, you know, I don't want us to pass something that restricts the chances for kids to succeed at the level they're ready for. Good example, you can fail San Diego Unified and not graduate and still get in the community college. But let's imagine a case of a kid who's been put into, I'll call it a one-size-fits-all A to G course setting, which is in the ninth grade has certain prescribed courses you must take. And they are struggling to get there and they might make it, but they're not going to, the next year, they're going to be a little further behind, but they're going to still be struggling. Are they going to be worried about their progress and ready to drop out or are they going to keep fighting it on like they ought to? Okay? Well, I'd rather have a kid take something that raises their skill level up to the point where they can now go into community college and succeed rather than have them so discouraged by facing such a demanding program that by the time they get to the senior year, they're ready to give up education. Now, that's the tension. What is the output that we want? Well, the output that's been going on in San Diego Unified for years is graduation at all costs. Standards, no. Graduation, yes. Okay? We did include a whole lot of courses. You know, we've got more high, more level of requirements to graduate than Poway does, more than Sweetwater. Okay? We have fewer kids completing A to G courses. That's true. But every school that I've been to in this district, and I expect them to, has offered A to G as an opportunity for every kid. If they don't, then that's a mistake. So, then I could say, the first step might be to require that all schools offer every single A to G opportunity that's necessary. That would be a first step before you required it for graduation because if they're not offering it now, they're not ready to do this. Okay, so, anyway, my feeling on this is, this requires not the resolution to adopt it, but a plan to go forward to get there. And the consequences of that plan may be, the first step will require that all our high schools have to offer A to G requirements. That might be the first step. You're saying they don't. All right? The second step might be that we require that all kids have, be enrolled in that so long as they succeed it, that is, that they got a C or better. Because if they get a D and they keep moving on, then we got social promotion already built in to our requirements for A to G. Because it some seems to me that if you can't do fractions, you shouldn't be in geometry. Or if you can't do fractions, you shouldn't be in algebra. Or, and I taught math in high schools and there were kids that I had to go back and start teaching those things that I just described. Ratios? Come on. You know, they were general math kids. We required at that time, three years of math and I was one of them. I taught their general math. They went on to maybe an algebra or some other kind of practical math and they graduated. No, they didn't go to the University of California. No, they didn't plan on it. They wanted, they thought success for them was going to a community college and succeeding in a trade. But if I said to you, "You can't go to a, you know, you're not going to graduate, you're just going to have to tough it out and then you're going to be able to go to community college as a failure in high school. Good luck to you." I'm not sure that that's encouraging them to continue on with education. You know, I know the issues here. You know, the best thing to do is say, if you want something like this, is to prohibit them to have access to anything else. You know, if I believe, and I do, that every kid in this school district should master another language besides English, then what I should say is, if you can't do that, you shouldn't graduate from San Diego City Schools. But if I do that, which I believe in, I'm going to have adverse effect on the kids that may succeed in life because I've put a hurdle up that they can't meet. I'm not comfortable with telling a kid he's a failure because he didn't get a certain level of grades in an A to G program when he didn't have any other choices. That's my problem. The only other way is to water down the A to G courses so they all get good grades and then they go to the university and we lose accreditation.
Mr. Barrera, please.
So, just a couple of maybe edits to the resolution. The last, be it further resolved, talks about that we're going to implement this with the students entering ninth grade in the fall of 2010. I mean, I'm all for planning, but I think we could...
That's next year.
2010.
That's a hundred years from now.
They didn't mean that.
Okay, right. Oh, you're since 2010. Okay. So, the other, I think, I might be incorrect about this...
In fact, the road didn't meet the A to G requirements.
I think that this is not just the UC system. I think this is also the Cal State system. Is that correct?
No, it's, we talked about it today. We've gone over it as a staff. We've called and checked. The entrance requirements, and Karen Bach over, I thought was here, she, I'd like to ask her quickly to step up and just address this because we've talked about that as a staff and it won't take but a quick second. Karen.
Yes, the California State University system uses the UC A to G lists when they evaluate students' applications for admission. The CSU system does in itself have UC lists.
Okay, well, I got you. But in other words, what we're talking about is the admissions requirements for really UC or CSU.
Oh, yes. Yes. If a student meets the UC requirements, they will meet...
The CSU requirements. So, I just think...
But USC, for example, USC does not require a 3.0 GPA.
USC is not a Cal State.
The CSU system, they have, different campuses have different requirements for the minimum GPA.
And the different majors.
And the different majors, yes. And it changes from time to time. There's a matrix. But if a student meets the UC entrance requirements, then they meet the minimum requirements to be eligible to apply for admission to the CSU system as well.
Okay.
Just meeting these requirements doesn't guarantee a student admission. It means that they qualify to apply.
Of course, yeah. So, yeah, so I would just, somewhere in the resolution, I think we should just talk about the, you know, it's about preparing students for both the UC and CSU systems.
Yeah, and that's fine. We just knew there was, we talked about it the other day and we pulled it out simply because they weren't the same.
Yeah, okay. Okay. I think that the, you know, I think some of what Mr. DeBeck says, I'd agree with, some I disagree with. I think that the idea here in the resolution, which I think is a good idea, is that this is about planning. This is about, you know, going through, appointing, you know, committee that's representative of a lot of different stakeholders and thoughtfully doing this because it is, I think, the experience that there are districts that have done this that have had a lot of problems in implementation. And so, I think it's about thinking this through correctly, you know, going forward. And I think part of what's, you know, critical in that is that we're making sure that we are aligning, you know, we've got, we've got another movement, you know, happening in this district, which is to really, you know, ramp up our career technical education program. And so, making sure that we're aligning those two efforts, I think, is important. Where I guess I would disagree a little bit with Mr. DeBeck is, I don't think there's a choice between elevating the standards in our curriculum and seeing higher graduation rates. In fact, I think the two are hand in hand. I think that, first of all, a diploma has to mean something. Graduation has to mean something. You know, if we pat ourselves on the back and say, "We're increasing our graduation rates," but, you know, a kid graduates from our school system and isn't headed anywhere, then I don't know that we've done a whole lot of service to that student. But I think that by, you know, I think that, you know, a point that we've heard consistently tonight is that the challenge is engaging our students. You know, if we have students sitting in a class where the standards are low and therefore the student is bored and they just sort of, you know, make their way through the system and eventually, you know, graduate, or they get so frustrated and so bored with school that they... the, with, with school that they don't graduate, I think that's part, I think that's a challenge that goes hand in hand. So I think, actually, you know, elevating the standards, setting expectations for every student that they're capable of meeting these standards, I think, is actually, you know, likely to increase our graduation rate. So I, you know, I think, I think, I think elevating our standards and improving our graduation rates are, you know, part of the same, same challenge. So I'd just stop there, because I know we've got a lot of...
Dr. Evans. Dr. Evans, please.
Yes. Yeah, I do agree that we do need to raise our standards. And I was rather, going through this chart, rather pleasantly surprised to see how closely the San Diego Unified District's minimum graduation requirements align with the University of California. I mean, the, the major difference in the entire thing being two years of world language, which I think we all agree is, is a very good thing, and that's even compensated by more flexibility on the number of, of history courses. So that is not changing anything there. And I agree too, that if the A to G requirements are not completely openly offered everywhere, that that's, that's, that's a really horrible situation that we need to fix right away. I think, the one, the one thing I think we need to, we need to plan carefully, and like as Mr. Greer was saying, the, the issue here of, of having a curriculum is one thing. Having a minimum grade point average is another. And because this is not Lake Wobegon, where everybody is above average, the, and I can certainly say that I know a particular kid, who will remain unnamed, who was very bright, was in the seminar program, did not graduate from, with the 3.0 from San Diego High School, and went on to California State University and did very well after that. So, and I also don't know of, of any universities or colleges that require a 3.0 grade point average to graduate. There's all kinds of, you know, come-laud, some are come-laud, and average, and lower, and so forth. So, so I think that's one thing that would have to be looked at really carefully, because, because then you can just get into the whole issue of, of grade inflation and, and kind of playing the system, as opposed to giving people challenging courses and holding them to standards and, and, and seeing how well they do. So I think, that's why I think there needs to be a lot of planning in terms of ramifications. The other issue is in terms of how closely we can align the career tech programs, so we're not making such a distinction between college-bound and non-college-bound. And I know that Ms. Andrea Guerrero had offered to meet with me, I haven't talked through about that yet, because that certainly needs to be done. I don't want people to be taken out of classes that they really have hands-on experience, really enjoy, and turning it into a theoretical class that, that turns them off. So, I agree. I think there has to be a lot to, a lot of planning on this, and I think that's what we've talked about everything today here on the board, that we need to take our time. This is the direction we want to go. Now we just need to know, what are all the ramifications, the impacts, both positive and negative.
We have a number of speakers, and we'll go to the speakers now.
One quick comment, President Jackson, I apologize. We talk a lot about ramifications, consequences intended and unintended. One of the consequences of this, just for we'll know...
The first reading, superintendent.
Yes, ma'am, I know. But if, I'm just telling you, if you adopt this, it's the first reading or the second reading. Just want to point out to you that when you start saying to students, "We're going to require two units of foreign language," which I happen to support, I support a lot more than that, but that means you're going to hire a lot more language teachers, which means you're going to hire less other teachers, because students will be taking those foreign languages in lieu of taking electives. And so I just, just need to say that, because that's fair, and you, you know, we have to plan carefully for that, because if you don't, you'll be, you'll be accessing teachers that you don't have a place to put. Just want to point that out.
Thank you. Jasmine Bozin, Nazakar Gonzalez, Manuel Gonzalez, Thomas Barnett, Chiquina Chavez, Reverend Gerald Brown, Patricia Ann Watson, Julie Quinones, Alberta Ochoa. So please come up and...
Hello, my name is Jasmine Bozin, 381 San Arica Courts, San Diego, California, 92113. And the reason why I'm here is because I'm supporting A through G...
Oh, and Sally Smith. Sorry.
Oh, I'm supporting A through G requirements. As a parent, I don't have the educations that you guys have, but with the education that you do have, I believe that you're going to, you're going to take advantage of this movement, if you want to call it like this, and give us the opportunity to give us the, to take the courses A through G, because we do have 40% graduates. If with the A through G requirements, I believe that our kids are not going to get that bored, and, and they're going to graduate. So it's very important for us, if you, if you guys take advantage of this, and we work with you guys to make it happen, to fix the mistake that we probably did, let's fix it, and let us, let's work together, please. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Chiquina Chavez. I've spoken up here to you guys before, and I have a bit of suggestion for when you guys come to a consensus. Maybe you should have a speak first, because it seems like you guys have already made your decision about how you're going to revise the resolution and stuff like that. So as a suggestion, maybe you should have the people from the community speak before you, you know, give your input about what you're going to do with our education. And so pretty much, what I want to say is that it becomes a necessity for, for the students of our community to graduate from high school. It's no longer a matter of wanting to go to college, or wanting to do this or do that. We need to graduate from college, because our community depends on it. I don't know if you guys have noticed, but, you know, a lot of us from high school don't have parents who are college-educated. And so it seems like it becomes a necessity for us to graduate from high school. And I don't know if you guys have seen the statistics from the San Jose School District, but when they actually implemented the A through G requirements as the graduation requirements for that school district, it doubled the amount, it doubled the amount of seniors who are eligible, who are eligible to apply to a UC or a CSU college system. And to add in, I'm a student from Lincoln High School. I don't want to speak on behalf of the other schools, but at my high school, no more than 15% of the classes are A through G certified. And so what Mr., what Mr. Greer was saying was that not, we, like, the, the classes for the A through G and for, I mean, for the San Diego Unified and for the CSU were the same. Of course, we have those classes, but are they A through G certified? They're not. And so whether or not we take the classes, we won't be eligible to go to those colleges. And pretty much, like, my last ending note is that any one of these, you know, people here can say that we, we need A through G and stuff like that, and people who are in opposition to that, don't speak for these students. Don't speak for, don't speak for me as a student, because this is what we need. And pretty much, we know that, you know, A through G is a big step towards, you know, allowing these students to go to college or be eligible, but this is not going to solve the achievement gap, and this is not going to solve this, this push-up rate that we have in our high schools. It is a big step towards that, but I think that we need to bring, bring the bigger issues to the table, and maybe that can be discussed amongst the people on the board. But a step towards that would, having you guys pass the resolution for us to have the A through G requirements as a default curriculum in our high schools. Thank you.
Board President Jackson, Superintendent Greer, my name is Pat Washington. I live at 4537 Alamo Drive in San Diego, and I want to say first and foremost, I had teachers and community members who thought I could do more, Mr. DeBeck, not less. This evening, I speak on behalf of the Education Consortium, a group that's made up of more than 25 organizations representing students, parents, educators, employers, workforce agencies, as well as civil rights advocates. We support the A through G resolution, because it brings the high school curriculum in line with 21st century economy demands. And it means that we will actually have equity in our school system to make sure that opportunities are distributed across the board, regardless of your zip code, for all of our students. The Public Policy Institute estimates that by the year 2020, more than 75% of jobs in this state will require some training from either a community college or a university, and 45% will require a university degree. We want this board to have a legacy that will make a positive difference for all of our students. We want you to support the resolution for the A through G curriculum. To reiterate what was said earlier, we don't want to go back on what our students need. We don't have a choice between educating our students and having higher, giving the students the things they need, and having a higher graduation rate. Giving students a more rigorous curriculum, a curriculum that prepares them for career, for community college, for the UC and the CSU system, is what our students require. We can no longer afford to have less than 40% of the students in this district graduating ready to go even to a community college. We've got to do what's best for all of our kids. It has been proven in San Jose, for example, that when you expected more from students, when you gave them the tools that they needed to succeed, they doubled the graduation rates, and they decreased, Mr. DeBeck, listen, they decreased the dropout rates.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Aru Gonzalez, and I'm a resident of Encanto, but for the past seven years, I've been going to school in La Jolla. And I think we forget to look at the social side of this issue. Since I was in fourth grade, my teachers have been pushing me not to go to the school in my community, because they know I won't, I wouldn't have opportunities there. So by increasing A to G to the default, we would be ensuring that education would be available in all areas. So rather than me going to La Jolla for two hours a day, every day for the past seven years, I could be doing something more worthwhile with my time. And I'm a little surprised by how little Mr. DeBeck thinks our children can do. Me personally, I got Bs and Cs in middle school, but in high school, I got As, because I was challenged, and I wasn't bored. And now, next year, I will be attending Harvard University, knowing, knowing that just because you did bad in middle school, or you did poorly in, in, in elementary school, doesn't mean that you don't have the opportunity in high school to, to excel. And so if we make A to G a requirement, we'll make sure that all people of all socioeconomic status and of all races do have the opportunity, not only the people in La Jolla.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam President, Vice President, and Superintendent Greer. My name is Reverend Gerald Brown. I'm director of the United African American Ministerial Action Council, the Center for Reentry Management, that provides employment readiness and placement for our chronically unemployed residents, the formerly incarcerated, those with limited skills, and many who are reading at the sixth grade level. In addition, I'm the chairperson of the Public Education Reform Subcommittee for UAMIC Initiative, the Community Unity Initiative. My work in both capacities has allowed me to see the nexus between a poor public education and the potentiality of one being incarcerated because of the lack of academic skills and competency. As an aside, 70% of California inmate populations read at a fourth grade level. Earlier this year, my organization hosted a two-day conference entitled "The Summit: Building the Beloved Community." The highlight of this summit was a preliminary session on public education that featured elected officials, educators, and leaders in the area of workforce partnerships. While a lot was said and heard, a key message that many in attendance took away from the discussion was the need to create and maintain dual tracks in our district high school. One, in preparation for college, and the other in preparation for successful careers in the skilled trades. While ensuring the mental and material equality of both tracks, to this endeavor, we are committed to bring into fruition. As the great educator Pablo Ferr pointed out, education either is used to facilitate integration of the younger generation into the logic of the present system and bring about conformity, or it becomes a practice of freedom, the means by which men and women deal critically and creatively with reality, and discover how to participate in transformation of the world. We at UAMIC are dedicated to building the beloved community. In the beloved community, we, at a minimum, we have public education that will develop, that will promote democracy, equal status for all students, and prepare, in preparation for the students for the careers in 21st century, while creating a village cultural and ethic ethos which reinforces the importance of education. We will applaud and support the A through G curriculum resolution as being a step forward in the right direction.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Buenas noches. I'm here in support, I'm Alberto Ochoa, 1615 Lindbrook Drive, San Diego, California. I'm here in support of the resolution for three basic principles, and three principles that drive our democracy. That every child, every student, has a right to equal encouragement, and that means that every child has a right to high expectations. And the simple, the second principle being the right to equal access, the right to the same opportunities that any student is provided anywhere in any space in the school district. And the third principle being the right to rigorous preparation for the world of work, and to enter into critical debate on the issues that impact our society. I'm reminded historically, that in the past, since I've been involved with San Diego City Schools, 1975, that over 70% of our low-income students as early as third grade are underachieving. What this resolution begins to address is that we need to shift our paradigm and begin looking at what needs to be hap, what needs to be happening at the elementary level in order to assure that our students acquire the critical skills, literacy, in order for them to engage in the prerequisite skills in the middle schools, so they have access to the A to G requirements as they enter the ninth grade. So the infrastructure that has been proposed in the resolution is a critical element that needs to be operationalized. How do we begin addressing the various serious dropout that impact African-Americans and Latino students, and low-income students in our community, is by taking this resolution seriously and acting upon it upon those three principles of equal encouragement, equal access, and the right to a rigorous curriculum. Thank you.
My name is Thomas Barnett, and I serve as the International Director for the Scripps Research Institute in La Jolla. And for clarification, the Scripps Research Institute, or T S R I, is completely separate from Scripps Health and the Scripps Institute of Oceanography, which they all get confused. T S R I is among the world's foremost private nonprofit postdoctoral biomedical research institute. In addition, T S R I's PhD programs in chemistry and biology consistently rate number one and number two in the country. I'm here today to reinforce a major need in our curriculum, not only in San Diego, but across the country. It's the four-letter term known as STEM, Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math. Of the nearly 3,000 T S R I employees, there are 1,800 PhD scientists. 75% of these scientists are foreign nationals from 58 countries, all on visas, because I make it happen. It'd be great to hire more US citizens, but there aren't enough to meet the need. The 75% foreign ratio is not unique to T S R I. My colleagues at the Salk Institute, the Burnham Institute, Caltech, MIT, Berkeley, Harvard, Stanford, all have foreign national percentages ranging anywhere from 69 to 80%. So until we can fill our labs with students raised and educated here in San Diego, we, you and I, we've not done our job in providing stimulating, challenging, and inspiring education. The A to G curriculum in many ways is just one part of the answer. It's one small step, but I believe it's a step in the right direction. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. Julian Quinones and Manuel Gonzalez. Okay. All right, this is a first reading for this item, this, in what book time is, so if not, we'll go ahead and move on.
Well, I got something.
Well, I got something. Yeah, well, I think people jump to a conclusion that I'm against it. What I'm not is I want to have a thoroughly vet the situation. You know, we hired a superintendent, and one of his objectives that we have agreed to already is to increase the graduation rate. And it's been my experience over the years that when you raise the standards, sometimes there is an effect on the graduation rate, and it may not be always positive. That, I just love it when it turns out that raising the rates happens as a result of raising standards. But when we raised the standards above those of the surrounding districts, we saw a decline in the graduation rate in San Diego. That's history. Now, you know, that doesn't mean we can't do better, and I hope the heck we will. And when this comes back, I hope we have not only the answers that we're going to require A to G, but that we've got built into that requirement the supports necessary to make it successful. See, what I'm running into over my long-term history here is that we have basically avoided, I'll call it interventions, because they were either too expensive or whatever. And when we fought the battles that I've already fought with over social promotion, which I don't agree with, we find that all of a sudden, when we start saying we're going to hold kids to standards, that we find that all of a sudden we figure out a new wiggle room of ways to get around it. So you know what, I agree that we ought to have elementary schools that have high standards and enforce them. I don't want a kid to get all the way down the line and be forced to take a series of programs where he's not prepared for. That's possible. It may be possible if we start at the top and try to reform education this way, when we should be starting at the bottom and raising standards as we go. All that said, when people say they represent my views because I raise questions and concerns, and they interpret that as being hostile to some new plan, I'm going to say, first of all, I have seen many mistakes made on the basis of emotional decisions around, I'll call it whatever, based on a lot of lobbying to the district that turned out less satisfactory because the board did not consider all the ramifications. So, you know, sitting, I may be, but I think sometimes there's a room for sitting in the system to sharpen the pencil and make us do a better job. So to say I'm against this requirement is probably incorrect. But to say that we should jump into it without thinking it out is also something I wouldn't support. There goes.
Speakers, any other comments, board members?
Yes. Well, I don't think the question is can it be done, because it can be done. And I think we really just, as Mr. Beck was saying, in terms of planning, we really need to look at how and really come up with a good strategy for success. And even as something not as grand as this, in terms of we're talking about the textbooks we needed to, and going from textbooks to new technology, we also have to have a bridging way to do it. But the important thing is, on the textbook thing, we decided we're going to move in that direction. And so I think that's an important point here. We're not just saying maybe we will do this someday, but we're committing ourselves to do it. And in the process of that, we're going to look at what all the potential positives and negatives of this might be. And I think that one of the things that we can do, and one of the things that will be beneficial for this district is to make a decision like this with community-wide, city-wide input, so that we go to all the areas of the city, to all the people, and talk, and parents, teachers, community members, students, and really get a good idea about what's going on, so we don't end up with a one-size-fits-all-for-all schools. But we've come up with a plan that really accommodates all of San Diego. So I'm supportive of us doing this, and I think we just have to figure out, and that's what the whole thing is, to set up these programs to stay, to come up with the right plan. So we might decide, okay, it's going to happen at X year with the ninth graders forward, or it could even be, we're going to say, we're going to start with a particular middle school class, because we want them, once they get into that ninth grade, to be prepared for the A to G program, and that they, in sixth and seventh and eighth grade, got a pre-A to G program. I'm not saying that's the way to go. I'm just saying these are all the kind of things that we need to investigate. And I know it's the first reading, but I think it's important to clarify that now.
Ferrer, please.
I just want to, just so we're all clear, is the first reading, which means we're going to vote on this at our next meeting on May the 12th. So I hope that everybody comes out again May the 12th. But in the meantime, we want to hear your ideas on, you know, improving this resolution, if you think that we need some improvement in this resolution. That's why we do a first reading and then a vote at the next meeting.
Does the first reading always mean we have it the next meeting? I mean, I expect that there'll be some answers to some of the questions that were raised. And if staff isn't ready to do that, I don't know that we'd be ready to vote on A to G requirements. I mean, I'm not, you know, I'm basically saying, okay, I'll vote on it, but I expect a staff report that covers the questions that were raised. And if they can do that, then they'll bring it back at a appropriate time. If it's next meeting, that's the way it's going to be, I'll do it.
We know to come back. Okay, having had those comments, let's move the agenda, please. The next item is I, Superintendent's Consent Agenda. Action by the Board of Education, Section I Superintendent's Consent Agenda. At this point, the agenda means that all items appearing in Section I adopted by one single motion, as a member of the Board, a superintendent requests that any such item be removed from the consent agenda and voted on separately. Generally, consent agenda items are matters which board members and superintendent concur are routine in nature and should be acted upon in one motion to conserve time and permit focus on other than routine matters on this agenda. In addition to Item I-04, I-05, and I-17, which were withdrawn by staff, Ms. Ward, are the end of the changes to the consent agenda. Okay, we have requests to provide public testimony on consent agendas from Items 1-02, 1-03. And I'm going to call those people up to speak now, and if I didn't call your agenda item, please tell me when you start speaking. So we have Jeannie Steeg for Item 1-03. We have Mike Lance, Item 1-03, Johnny Calvin for Item 1-02, and Mike Goldwater for, I'm not sure.
1.03.
1-03, too? Okay, phone up, please.
Mike Goldwater, 4350 Mount Everest Boulevard, San Diego, 92117. Ms. Sheila Jackson, President, Dr. Greer, board members. Mr. Ferrer is Vice President, that's your title. Good evening. My topic is 1.03, but it also deals with F.04. CSEA Chapter 724 is elated that the Board made the hard decision to eliminate the two specific positions, the Director of Labor Relations and the Director of Human Resources Classified. These people were placed in a position several years ago, about seven or eight years ago, by a superintendent without publication of the positions. They were simply placed there. That era is gone. That era doesn't exist anymore. Jobs should be advertised, jobs should be looked upon on a national level. The Chief of Human Resources, Mr. Sam Wong, I'm asking you, when these positions become open, as indicated in the new job descriptions, such as Human Resources Officer, when you look at the applications, you look for a master's degree, you look for somebody who's qualified and not somebody who might have been a confidential secretary and was placed there by your predecessor, as the case was. When it comes to any form of labor relations, whether you call it a director or you call it whatever the terminology might be, you have somebody who's qualified with a master's degree in human resources or master's degree in labor relations, not somebody who has an A-8 degree in automotive technology, because that's what they did once in their life. I am aware that one individual is now trying to earn his bachelorate so he is marketable within the field of the San Diego Unified. I applaud that, but he has been faking it for seven years. There have been another, previously to this, talking on F.04, there have been two other chapter members of the other chapters who were concerned about these two individuals losing their positions. CSEA's point of view, Chapter 724, is there has been a tremendous amount of upheaval when it comes to level three grievances, in which the hopefully former Director of Labor Relations would fold his hands and say, nope, 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 I'm not going to, I'm not going to look at the facts. Ms. Catherine Nakamura, being an attorney, she's not here right now, will know that you deal with facts, you apply the law to the facts. This individual did not do this, as Mr. Sam Wong was known, has been told this on several occasions. He was the wrong person in this era. Please don't make the same mistake, and you place that person in another position of authority. That is a mistake.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's John Colvin, I live at 8716 Eldica. Good evening, board members, President, Vice President, Superintendent, Dr. Evans, and everybody else. What I've come here to speak to is the promotions that I see on this list. And I'm sure a lot of you are aware of the dysfunction in landscape, which I represent, and how it's been short in doing everything. But what I see in these promotions, I help file the grievance that brought these hires back in. And what I've seen, and what I'm seeing, is that the most experienced of us are not being put in the positions that we should be to effect a change that you need to do the most efficient job. So I'm asking you to make them go back to the drawing board, because I've had conversations with Mr. Kova and Mr. Rollins, and I had a question for him. I had a question, I said, how are you going to get those people who you need to pull in line to tell you that they are the problem and that they need to be replaced? I said, I don't think it's going to happen, because when they, you guys get the money, they give you a story, they release it. But when it gets to me, it's not reaching the services, I'm not reaching the children. And that's what it is, because the most experienced of us are not in the positions to train these new guys. I have 40 or 50 guys who have not even had their initial evaluation, and some of them have been promoted to leads with two years over guys with 30 years. They're coming to our sights, asking us what to do, because these are fishing buddy promotions. Landscape supervisors have jobs on the side that are landscaped for years until Mr. Rollins took their trucks away. They had free gas, free equipment, and a whole lot. And so this culture has gone on for years and years and has been unchecked, because they give you a song and a dance, because you don't have the experience to know what's happening. And we work in fear of telling you from being retaliated. And as the representative, if you look back into the history, you see, I paid a dear price for representing my members, and I'll pay it again. But because it's the children that end up getting the shorthand of the stick. And they're our children. It's our community, and it's all related. And you're doing a great job so far, those of you that I campaigned for. And I'm going to, and I'm just going to put it out there, because really, I don't fear retaliation anymore. There's nothing new they can do to me. You know, I've been fired, everything. And so what I want to tell you is that please keep doing what you're doing. I see you have, you have an eye on what's going on, and the dysfunction that allows these managers to continue to function in this way, you have addressed at that level. And because I'm in those rooms with them, I'm kind of like the manager police around here. And I paid a dear price for it, but I've also made a lot of difference for people and their families. And I'm glad that you're putting the students first for a change, because I've been here since Dr. Pendleton, and it hasn't happened since then. And I miss Franz Zimmerman. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Johnny. See, I know you.
Hi, my name is Mike Lance. I live 9236 Lake Hill in Santee, 92071. Good evening, board members and Superintendent. I am speaking on one, three classification items also. I'm having a little problem going through all this here, and I will hope that you could kind of point things out to me a little bit. On every one of the different ones, Facilities Plan, Construction, Finance Division, all the different departments, each, most of them all come up and say the, there's one line, and underneath, I'll just go underneath, Facilities Plan and Construction says, this, following items are related to the replacement of full-time contract services and everything, and it goes on, says, "To establish that following new job class will allow for the recruitment process to begin." I know we're going with the portal land thing, and we want to reestablish and grow. But when I come down to the Department of Finance Division, if you'll read there, it says, "The following items are related to the reorganization of the Finance Division. Establishment of the following new job classes will allow for the appointment of foreign incumbents." Is that reorganization? Just the names have been changed to protect the innocent, to me. It goes on with the controller there, if you'll look at the, look at the different changes that you have on there. The controller has jumped up to a 38 from a 36. That's an increase of $6,401. The Director of Business Support Services has jumped from a 34 to a 36. That's an increase of $5,736. The other two went down 11,000, the other two, the Director of Insurance and Risk Services and Direct Payroll, went down 1,643 dollars. I thought we were trying to save money here, folks. What are we doing, giving people raises at a time when we're trying to save money? I haven't seen anything increase in getting better in my department particularly. In fact, I've seen less support for the classified, because tonight, you went for F4, Reduction Elimination of Classification Services. That's our reward. Eliminate us, get rid of us, give the supervisor a $6,000 or $5,000 increase. What kind of support do you want us to give you? Under our title, we're Director of Business Support Services. We're supporters of you guys. We're supporting everyone in the district. And every time we ask for something, I've been there for 30-some years, 33 years, I have not seen an increase in my position. I'm not asking for an increase. All I want is justification of why we're giving supervisors and everything such in the large amounts at this time, and we are looking for cutbacks. We've had a reduction in our force as the people to support and do the work, but we're giving everyone else's coming in increase? I have a problem with that. Let's get a little, let's get our minds thinking about the people who are doing the work. Thank you very much.
Jeannie Steeg still here? Does any board member wish to remove any item from the consent agenda?
No. So I'm going to pull the rest of the consent agenda.
I will pull Item 1-03.
1-03?
Yes. Okay. Okay, you want to move the rest of them?
I moved the rest of them.
Second.
Okay, they're moving the seconded. It passes 4-0, with one person being absent. And in Item 1-03, I do agree with our working staff. I do understand that managers deserve to, we need to restructure our district, but I think we also had mentioned that we were not really interested in giving people additional raises at this time, when we were trying to balance our budget. So for that reason, I can't support this item, but you can move it, please.
Yeah, just real quick, and I respect your position. What we've done in these items, as the Board knows, is we have reduced over 30 positions out of a department. Some of the people that were, you're combining jobs, I know.
Yeah, I understand that.
Okay.
These are just individual positions that we're elevating, and that's the one I have problems with. I know we've done a lot of cuts, I'm very proud of what the staff has done. I just can't agree to giving people additional income at this particular time. Okay, so we can get a motion, a second, we can move this item.
I move.
Okay, we've got a motion, we've got a second.
Sure. The motion is to...
To approve.
Motion is to approve.
Yes.
No, I second.
And John, DeBeck seconded it? Okay, please vote. Okay, please vote. That item passes 3-1. Okay, it's our consent agenda. We have a couple more people that were here for public comment that didn't get to speak earlier, so I will call your name if you're still here. Thank you for staying. We have Roger Ross, John Finley, Rudy Rico, Steve Schuyler, and Priscilla Dixon for the music program for artistic students. Okay? We have Doug Haynes from University City. Thank you very much for staying.
Great.
You know, I think we need a table on that, and, you know, the requirements, what you were looking at, and, yeah, but I don't think we've got it.
I'm Priscilla Dixon. My address is on file. Thank you for having me. I'm a Point Loma High School band mom, and this is Nick Bauer. He's replacing some of the other students who weren't able to stay. I'm very happy to report that your schools in San Diego are succeeding in developing our young people into productive, educated citizens, and this in large part is due to music in the schools. My son, and you have his photo. Kyle is a great example of this. He literally went from special ed in preschool and elementary school, and then in fifth grade was enrolled in band, picked up the trombone, and within two years, had a complete turnaround in school. He had never been tested for GATE. One of his teachers said, "My gosh, he's doing so well in school. Has he ever been tested for GATE?" Much to his older sister's chagrin, who was in GATE but not at the seminar level. Here, the younger brother is tested and got 99.9 percentile at the end of sixth grade. I give all the credit for that to music in the schools. It caused a tremendous shift in him, and it made him connected to school and enjoy school, and I just can't thank music in the schools enough. As a result, he's graduating high school this year, has been in honor band, and just recently got the Semper Energy Scholarship, and will be going to SDSU for accounting. I just hope that other students coming up behind us will have the same opportunity, and thank you.
Well, that's great. Good going.
Hey, I'm Nick Bauer. Unfortunately, my colleagues, my peers were not able to come, but I'm here representing them and everyone in band. I'm in Point Loma High School, a sophomore. I believe that at one point, all of you got a CD from us. Did you listen to it?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah? Was it good? You liked it?
Yeah.
Yeah?
In the car.
It's a great CD. I listen to it all the time. But, um, why am I in band? It's not the social status, it's not the uniforms, you know, hot and tights, not very fun to wear, but...
It's the hat, right?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, definitely. Definitely the hat, the shakeout, that's the best part. But I believe in music, and I believe that it is essential to a community, and to the school, and to everyone. Our mission statement is connecting students, school, and community through music, and I believe that really defines our program, and hopefully, the programs throughout the country, the county, the state, all these music programs. It brings people together, and I implore you to keep this going, because it is so important. I can't stress enough how important it is, that we have music in our community, in our schools, and that everyone in our schools has the opportunity to experience music and be engaged. And you've heard the success stories and how it helps people, and if that isn't enough, just think about how different the community would be without music. It's, it's, I can't even imagine the community without music. It's, it's mind-boggling. But, um, so I hope you make the right decision and keep music in our community.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you for waiting. Doug Haynes, Blanca Chavez, Enrique Hernandez, Eliza N., okay, Andrew Gilbert, Bernice Epp, and Mario Laurel. Oh, we have, we have, yeah, okay.
Mario Laurel.
Gracias por tomar tiempo para oírme.
Thank you for taking the time to listen to me.
El problema que me trae es que la posición de la señora Nelly Goodman...
The problem that he brings is the position that is held by Nelly Goodman.
Ha tomado la decisión de quitarle su puesto en la escuela Toller Elementary.
And they have taken the decision to lay her off at Toller Elementary School.
Como su posición lo dice, es un asistente en todo el sentido de la palabra...
Her position states she's a guidance assistant in all of the extension of the word. That's what she does.
Porque tiene ética y profesionalismo, aparte de vocación para impulsar y motivar a la comunidad.
Because she's got ethics and professionalism, in addition to the vocation to push the students.
Ya que mis hijos han pasado por esta escuela y gracias a gente como esta que ha estado en su vida de ellos, uno de ellos está en San Diego State.
My children have gone to this school, and because of her, now one of my kids is in San Diego State University.
Con el ingeniero Larry Anko.
With engineer Larry Anko.
Este, yo quisiera que reconsideraran esta decisión de quitarla de esta comunidad, ya que esta escuela tiene casi el 40% de niños pertenecientes al ILAC.
I would appreciate if you would reconsider the decision, because this position is needed in our school.
Y tiene el 40% de niños del ILAC.
And they have 40% of the English learners.
Ajá. Y esta persona es una persona 100% bilingüe.
And this person is 100% bilingual.
En la cual apoya y ayuda mucho a la comunidad y le da confianza a los niños para seguir adelante y graduarse.
And she supports the community, and she pushes them to graduate, and she also helps the community.
Lamentablemente, yo me separé un poquito de la escuela porque estoy tratando de dar información a los muchachos para que lleguen a la universidad.
Unfortunately, I was out of my interest at the schools, because I'm trying to push the kids to be at the university, my kids.
Y cuando yo supe de esta decisión, este, tomé la iniciativa de recolectar cartas de los padres.
When I knew of this decision, the decision that was taken, I collected some of the signatures and letters from the parents.
Y una pequeña recopilación del paso de esta persona, este, de una vitacora de su servicio.
And a recapitulation of her curriculum or her biography.
La cual quisiera entregarles para que la revisaran en su tiempo que tuvieran.
And he will hand it to you, so that you can review it whenever you have the time.
Y tomaran, este, la decisión que pues si la pudieran dejar para seguir motivando y llevando a los niños a alcanzar la meta.
So that you make a reconsideration of the decision, so that she can continue to push our children to accomplish their goals.
Más en esta área, que tiene una comunidad bastante grande en el programa del ILAC.
And certainly more in this area, where they have more English learners in the area of Toller Elementary.
Les agradezco mucho, y la verdad fue muy placentero oír todos los que se están enfocando y lo que están haciendo con la comunidad.
I appreciate your intervention, and I also want to congratulate you, because I heard a lot of things that enhance my position regarding the district.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. With that, we will adjourn for five minutes and meet upstairs in the conference room. Thank you for attending, and have a good evening. Bye-bye.